Reboot again.
There we go. Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Rock Crease. Couple of things by way of housekeeping for this Board of Directors Work Session Day. You have your exit right out the store bathrooms are just down the hall to your right. This meeting is streamed and recorded on Zoom. As the robot voice just told us, it will also go up on the Clean Water Services YouTube page.
I didn't even realize there was a YouTube page.
We haven't, we have a YouTube page and we're we're getting better with each each passing week. We also have a new microphone setup. Your microphones are on. Please know that if you have sidebar conversations, the mics may pick them up. There is a button that you can click on and off. Mr. Joe Gall also has
The master control.
The master control. So when we go on break and when we go on lunch, Joe will hit that button, which will cut the mics. And then you'll see us pushing the green buttons because we need to manually do each one when we turn them back on. When we resume after a break or after lunch. Do you have any questions? Let me know. And and they work really well. There's no pickup between them. So we are just otherwise the default is that they're on. One other announcement, we have been looking at September 5th as our next Board of Directors Work Session Day. Due to some scheduling conflicts, we are now going to move that to October 10th. So you should see an updated invitation in your Outlook by Monday at the latest. So we'll update that on calendars.
And I will update the Washington County Board of Commissioners RT Plan documents so that it's clear that the Commissioners and the Directors will have one place so they can see the complete list together.
Do a round of introduction so that we know who's in the room?
Yeah. I'll start and then we'll go around.
This is Chair Catherine Harrington.
Elizabeth Edwards, Chief of Staff for Clean Water Services.
This is Commissioner Nafisa Fai.
Jason Snyder, Board of Directors Member from District Three.
Kathy Leeder, Chief Financial Officer, CWS.
Joe Gall, Chief Utility Relations Officer.
Karen De Baker, Communications and Community Engagement Managers.
Erin Lowry, Finance Manager.
Jerry Willie, Board of Directors, District Four.
Cam Trace, Board of Directors, District Two.
One of their notes, I have a brand new phone and I don't have a sound. So I'll, I'll be working on that. So my apologies upfront.
It's okay. I have to relearn how to use an Apple just phone every single day.
Likewise, Rick Shanley, Acting CEO slash General Manager.
Stephanie.
Lani, Chris Stefan Morris, Vice Director of Product.
Christine Meadows, Legal Counsel.
Sue Page, Office of the CPA.
I'm Jody Goodcomer.
I'm Todd Senna. I'm here with I P.
And Ann Lee is, has just stepped out of the room. She's with the Office of the Executive.
And so with that, we have a full agenda today. We will cover our billing, an update on our plan to rebuild trust, go through the West Basin Master Plan, executive summary, discuss buildings update, including Ripple, Central and Springer, and close out the day with board planning and discussion.
And so that'll be a good time, Directors, to have your thinking caps on about what are the various items that you would like us to have discussion on, be in sync on. So really be thinking now through the end of 26, the year that is. And if we haven't already done it by then, at the monthly Chair Mayor's Meeting, it would, the theme, topic theme of, of the day of the monthly meeting was Clean Water Services. And so the three of us can give a report, four of us can give a report out on that.
Farbless. With that, I'll start us into our first presentation.
Thank you. Kathy.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. Kathy Leeder, CFO of Clean Water Services. I'm here today to talk about CDOs billing.
Oh, Kathy, can you do us a small favor? Can you remind us, after we adopt the budget, what finance still has to do work to get that new fiscal year budget into, I assume, the state like the county? You have to close the books on the new, that fiscal year, start it for a new fiscal year. So before we dive deep into this, can you remind us of those major financial events that for us, we know it's vital, but sometimes we forget the magic that happens.
Yeah, yeah. So year in is really busy with budget. Of course, budget starts middle of the year, right? With CIP budget development. So Erin and her group are busy working to compile all that information to put together a budget document that is the request or proposed budget that then goes to the committee and becomes an approved budget that then goes to a public hearing once again and becomes an adopted budget. And as part of that meeting, we're also not only adopting that budget, we are adopting our rates and charges, we're adopting our CIP related to that. So once we finalize, we stop the number movement. And usually in that same meeting, we're looking at our budget for the prior year for 25, and we're identifying, are there some areas where we need more contingency moves? So we do some budget transfers during that meeting also. So after the numbers have stopped for 26, the, the numbers go back to Erin and their group then updates the revised budget for 25 and puts together the adopted budget for 26, puts that budget document together to be then put out on our website, and then we submit it for, to GFOA for an award. So while that is happening to close out on the finance side of the county services, we are now going in closing a year. So we're going in in the months of so we, in June, we already had a June 23rd, we had our interim audit with the financial auditors. They came and did their initial looking at our controls, testing some items. Then they, they leave and then during the next months before October 1st, we are closing our books. We're accruing back expenditures that come in and invoiced during those months that relate to June 30. We're doing all of our gap related interest because we're taking a budgetary based, kind of like a cash based system to a full accrual based system. So we do a lot of journal interest to do that, you know, things like fixed assets, posting our fixed assets, depreciating them, putting our bond information in, in an accrual basis, just a lot and accruing back expenditure. So that's a heavy, a lot of work going on in that time period to where we come. And we've got a final GL, a statement that we've developed for June 30 at around the first part of October. And then the auditors come back out and they do a final field book, they call it, where they are then looking at our final balance sheet accounts and identifying are, do we have identified all of our liabilities, have our assets stated correctly? So doing, doing some confirmations related to revenue, testing some of our capital projects. At this point, then we're also then developing our annual comprehensive financial report or ACTFOR. And that, so our staff develops that. They do all of the statements, the note disclosure, the statistical sections related to it and required RSI additional information and submitted to the auditor, they go goes in and ticks and ties it. That usually happens about the first of November. So during the month of November, the auditor is reviewing that. And then by the, we try to get an opinion issued by the auditor by the November 30th, the first part of December, because that goes over to the county then as included in their, as a component unit of Washington County. So finally, we get that blessing and final sign off of the budget in an opinion. And then we have our audit committee meeting. So I should say that we have a new Clean Water Services Audit Committee Group that was put together. We are meeting next week on the 23rd to go through that, you know, results of interim and talk about where we're going with, with the field work. And then after, you know, in October, when, or actually in November, after we've completed and they've issued an opinion, we'll meet again as the audit committee and review the findings of the audit with, with management and the auditor. And then it finally later on down the road, a couple, maybe a month later, we actually, the, the board accepts that report out forward. So that's kind of where we sit every year. And then, and then we're back into budget again. So.
It's from my viewpoint, it's always helpful to hear of the really thoughtful and disciplined financial planning, not just the planning, but the actual work that happens. Because this is a very sound organization. So thank you. And now into billing. How do we get some of that rate payer money?
Okay. So what we're going to talk about today is I'm going to give you a little bit of the history of billing for Clean Water Services. Going to talk about how we, Clean Water Services bill our customers, how the cities bill for us. And I'm a little bit about the industrial side because it's a little bit different component from our regular users. And, and then Karen's going to talk about how we communicate with our customers. So I wanted to start out first with a slide that really gives you a picture about our billing. So these are the revenues for fiscal year 24, just under 140 million of this sewer and storm water management. And as you can see here, over 60% of our revenues are billed by somebody else. So the light blue is, is our regional billing through the cities and the dark blue, that's the 38%, that's when we bill directly to our customers, the regional and the local rate. And that really speaks to the fact that you have to consider that we don't know a lot about our customers for billing purposes. And we don't know how to communicate with them at times too. We don't have that information in our system. So here's the billing issue. It was really interesting to me because I came here in, in 2007. So a lot of things happened before I, I got here. So back when we first formed in 1976, we actually used to bill on the tax rule and it was a flat rate once a year. So there was, there wasn't a base in use as a flat rate fee. In July of 1990, we brought surface water management utility onboard. And in that same year, we began direct billing to the customer. And with the option of a one-year payment or a three-year payment. So we didn't, we weren't on the top, the tax rule any longer. In 1991, we then transitioned from that once a month to this bi-monthly billing with our, for the sewer and swim customers. And, and then in 94, we had a couple of things happening there where we did an intergovernmental agreement with Tuam Valley Water Districts. We joint billed together with them for our, our customers, the, the regional, the local. And at the same time, we implemented consumption based rates and charges. So that same year, two items went on. And that really was the opportunity then for the customer to have some impact in their rate on use. Although, you know, the fixed component is, is higher than the use, really related to those standard operating capital that are always there, no matter what the use of the system is. So talking about how, okay, so this is how we now bill at Clean Water Services for our regional and local customers, unincorporated Washington County and some of the other cities that, that we'll, we'll list later in this presentation. So the initial IGA was in effect, as we mentioned, in 1994. It was a 20-year renewal effective July 1, 2025. So as you can guess now, we're at that 20-year mark, 2025, our IGA has, is, is, has ended on, on that agreement. And in that agreement, we agreed to share in the cost of, so TBWD does all of the billing. They have the software onsite. They did the billing. They did the collections. They, and water shut off. So they, they, and so we through that budget process paid a cost allocation related to that staffing for the billing and the collection and, and the, and the IT services too that they provided. In the 26 budget at this point, that's, it's a $1.7 million cost factor, but that is just those cost allocations related to the billing services. You also have to look at, we together share a billing system with them through Open. So we pay about $365,000 a year related to the billing system. And then with this current billing system, we've been doing some stabilization related to it. So we've paid some additional consulting costs related to that with a project manager that assists us and also support from the, the vendor Open. And that right now is about 285,000. So we have some added costs that are in there with, including in addition to that 1.7 billion. So, so for TBWD, they have about, they have 13 regular staff and two limited duration staff that are supporting us in, in that billing process. Clean Water Services, we have two senior utility billing reps that, that do customer service and billing related to our customers. And we have one business systems analyst that was brought onboard recently, really to help support that open product.
So are they really just helping with problems and things that are? I assume most of the direct customer service is being done by the shared staff, the 13 shared staff, but things that are goofy or not working. I mean, is that where the, the other, this actual CWS staff get engaged here?
I'm going to answer in a minute and have Erin expand. She actually supervises that great. But I would say that we do a lot of our own customer support with questions on billing. We do, we get people brought over from the cities having questions on billing. And they also do the review and prep of the bills that go out for our group. And they do the winter water average related to a calculation that we update each year. So, but there is, you know, support that does happen at the TD, TBWD level just related to collections, you know, payments, because those do come to them. Did I say that fairly, Erin?
Yes, you did. So our staff set up Clean Water Services only accounts. So that's about 12,000 accounts that we have right now. Any specialty questions related to what we do, we ask that TBWD send to us as that's our, our knowledge base. Adjustments to accounts on sewer or swim are done by our staff as well.
And are these staff, the three that are mentioned there, or at least the, the billing representatives, are those on CWS campus or are those at their call center?
No, they are in the office next to me.
Okay.
And they also run two cycles of bi-monthly bills.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So that is how we bill. So I'm going to go back because like I said, I came to the district around 2007. And at that time, we were already on to a new system with TBWD. They had originally had, I think it was called G4, I'm not sure, but it was an outside third-party billing system that was going out. It wasn't being supported in and longer. And they made the determination to go ahead and, and do an in-house built billing system. So when they did that, so their IT built the system, it was really focused on water because that's what they do. We were kind of a, out there and not bought of, particularly in the needs of the system when they built that. It had very little documentation related to the system itself on, you know, for training and such. It was no longer than tied to any of our systems. So I didn't know this, but the G4, our permitting was actually tied to the billing system. I didn't know that. That broke when we went to this new in-house system. So we not only didn't have the permitting going to add accounts on, we didn't have any daily financial, daily, monthly, you know, annual financial lead in or, or import into our system. It was all manual, very manual. And we had reporting issues. There was very, there was very little reporting functionality within their system there. So we had a lot of challenges related to that new system. So at that point in time, and, and we were in this new agreement, we decided to look at a feasibility study. Are we going down the right path to meet our future needs? So we worked with Moss Adams. I went back and read that again recently. I hadn't read it in years. And it was actually a well-done study. Took a lot of thought and, and consideration in where we go. And it was basically looking to see what other billing alternatives are there out there for us as we look to meet our future needs for our customers. They analyzed five alternatives as part of that study, you know, maintain existing relationship as is. So just, just go forward with the IGA we have in place. Or maintain existing but negotiate improvements, including autonomy for us of some of that data, the ability to access the data, the ability to report off of it. And or bring billing in-house via Oracle Utilities, because Oracle was our SH, you know, it was our ERP at that point in time. And that was the, the easiest transition over, although they recognized that Oracle is not a utility billing software. So it does have some restrictions, but it definitely is a tried and true good system that we could easily implement in our, and we wouldn't have to RP it. It would have been just like sole source. Or bring billing in-house via an alternative vendor. So looking at outside, there are a lot of, there were a lot of billing vendors out there as opportunities to bill off of. So that was another option that or just go and outsource billing systems and processes to another entity that maybe focuses more on a, a sewer, storm utility itself. So looked at those alternatives. The recommendations they came back with was they, they recommended that we pursue alternative number two. And they did that because they felt it had the lowest risk of all of the options and it had the lowest cost other than alternative one, which is to stay the way we were. That wasn't really feasible for us at that point. We needed some adjust. So as part of that recommendation, they said, the staff, we, we think you need to look at adding staff. Because now where you're going to be asking TBWD to be giving you access to the data, to be able to like, figure out what you need in reporting. So they felt like there should be some added staff and personnel to support that. That's why you saw a little bit of an increase in cost over what was, if we just stayed the course under alternative one. And so they also in there recommended that we, you know, look at our processes, map your processes. That would give you the documentation you didn't have under TBWD's system. And at the same time, what do you need? What are your requirements? So this would not only help with what are we asking TBWD for going forward, but also it started that element of mapping what we need as a needs and assessment. If we decided, you know, based on the second to last bullet, maybe TBWD didn't support alternative two. Maybe they wanted to stay the way they were. And so this gave us the information we needed it. We had to then go and say, you know, we got to leave TBWD and take one of the other alternatives for us. So story, and you see now where we ended, we ended with alternative two. Down the road, you know, sustainability of that in-house system, you know, wasn't there. And may, and TBWD agreed to, they couldn't maintain it as people left and nobody, you know, knew the original system that was built. So we together decided to partner and buy a outside third-party off-the-shelf system, giving us then a couple benefits, one being more control, because we have 50% ownership, more control over our, our billing services and, and data, but also connectivity to our system. We don't have permitting there yet, but we do have all the, the billing, collections, all that's automatically uploading into that system. So we got some benefits from that. But with that, then we've also been dealing with some issues of stabilization of that particular system.
I asked a quick question.
Yeah.
In 2008, did the pie chart that you provided in the beginning of this discussion about how many we bill independently and how many, the 62%? What was the, what did the pie chart look like then?
I'd have to look, do, wanted to do the exact numbers, but it, it did, it, it didn't, it doesn't change much. It's reflective really of, yeah, the customer base we've had over time. Yeah.
That's interesting. Okay.
Yeah. And so one thing I'll say about feasibility studies is that we did this feasibility study back in 2008 because we saw there maybe were opportunities for building a, a system in the future that would meet our needs. And so, and, and now, and, and they, they addressed a lot of really key concerns that are still there, still questions now, today. But the one thing they didn't look at is, and the, the board is asked us to look at is, you know, income assistance and how we bill those customers. And so I think that's an area where, you know, that, that wasn't addressed. It wasn't an issue or a risk that was reviewed in that feasibility study, but something now that it being asked, we, we have to address and look at, and look at the stability of the system that we go forward with and, and maintaining that could into the future.
I had another question. Sorry. But currently, TBWD does have an income assistance program, right?
Yes, they do. Because they bill, yeah, because they bill, they bill all their customers. Our, our challenge will be that we only bill 38% of our customers. And how do we work with the cities to offer an assistance program through their, their bill?
That's why when we come back to that topic at a future work session, we're going to need a really good summary chart.
Kathy, just for clarity, when the 2008 study was done, did not look at the joint billing with the seven largest cities? That was not part of the
They look with what they called scopeability. And, and some of the benefits of going to our own billing system were a positive on scopeability, but they weren't talking about billing everybody in the region. They talked about the opportunity, if some other cities did want us to bill for them, that we could. And they felt like the system we were in with TBWD limited that.
So, so looking ahead, here we are in 2025. It was, or it is a 20-year IGA effective July 1, 2025. So where are we at now?
Right now, we're in the process of doing a letter of intent with them to continue on and, and then the decision to be made of how long we have that contract for and what else we might have if we chose to go a different way.
And so will the board be engaged in the future on that?
Yes, definitely. Because we need your input too and where we go.
So what's the target date on that?
Well, so any movement out, so obviously we would hope to do maybe a feasibility study, kind of start again where we are now, what we need going forward at this point in time. That'll take some time to do. And then decision being made, if the decision being made was to go to another system, that's going to take some time.
It's an AR, Rick?
Yeah.
To figure that out because of the Board of Directors, just like with the Board of the County Commissioners, we have two assets that are ours, our time and our political capital. And so we're talking about an intergovernmental partner with TBWD. So that hits both of those assets. So that's why we're through the October 10th work session, we need to, we, the Board with you have to take stock of what is our business cycle look like? The Board's business cycle look like out through the end of 26, just because that's a timeframe, I think we can get our, that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it goes into 2027. That's not a problem at all. And you've seen my charts, they go out to 2030. So it's okay to say dot, dot, dot year.
Yeah. And we know that this is a big, complex consideration. And the way that, this is sort of the first conversation with the Board, looking at having a follow-up conversation in October to continue to brief and get direction from you all. And then we'll look at scheduling out other waypoints for, for input and direction.
So we don't, we don't need overviews that have all the detail. But rather, what's the broad sketch? Here's what we might do. And there may be two branches, for example, of alternatives. That's fine.
And just to clarify, we have been talking to TBWD. I've been emailing Paul Matthews and they understand.
Yeah.
What's the title there, CEO?
CEO.
GM.
He's CEO.
I think he's General Manager.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, I think so.
What's his name again?
Paul Matthews.
Thank you.
He, he was their former CFO, finance person. He's been in the position at least a year. We've got good relations with Paul.
Yeah, we had lunch. They're very, obviously very interested in what we're doing. They are, they understand we're going to need to build some flexibility and to they need the, this interim agreement because their contract is basically up. So we got to keep things in motion, but we'll certainly build in the flexibility, you know, to allow, assuming we want to proceed, that's part of the question being answered today. The flexibility and, and understanding of the timing.
How long has the current? There were, it seems to me like since we've been on the Board since 2019, there was a new billing software that we each invested.
That's open.
That's open. Okay. And what, what year did that changeover happen?
I can't remember. I guess 2021, we went, we went live.
July 1.
But that's been a long, I mean, we started that process for selection
Yeah.
back in 2019. It's been a long process.
Yeah. But the go-live date was 2021.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Because in my brain, I think, you know, by 10, after 10 years, you better look at how, that, how that software solution is performing and, and go from there. So that's just where it has had is at. Okay.
This Paul says Chief Executive Officer.
Is it? Okay, I was checking too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for the Service District Managers Quarterly Meeting, can't remember the cycle. Who attends on your team and who attends from TBWD?
I don't know, actually, Chair, about a service district.
Okay, so the change.
That's, that's changed. That's not something we're involved with. We do participate in a water.
US used to be there.
Yeah, we haven't been there since I've been here four years.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. You and I will talk about. Okay, terrific.
So now we're going to talk a little bit about how the customers that Clean Water Services does. We talk about unincorporated Washington County. We also do the billing for Banks, Durham, Gaston, King City and North Plains. We do their sewer and storm water. They have their own builders that do the water side for them. Approximately 60,000 accounts are joint billed with TBWD. So the water is on that bill along with the sewer and storm. And then 12,000 of those customers are those, the cities that we just billed, the, the sewer and storm.
Great question. Who does King City get their water from?
Tigerd.
Tigerd.
Thank you.
And as part of that, the, the, so for the smaller cities where, so on the, on the city, Banks, Durham, Gaston, King City, North Plains. We build and maintain their infrastructure and we bill for them. And as part of that agreement, their IGA with them, we also pay a franchise fee related to revenue billed in those cities to them. And under the open system, we, for accounts receivable, we, we get daily transactions coming over with the money moving over in the pool. The local government investment pool, but automatically every night posting to our GL and we do reconciliations.
GL being general.
Yeah, sorry, GL, general ledger. And then billing information pushes to CWS financial statements that record. So it's, it's live and inside of Oracle every day, daily entries. We do daily and monthly reconciliations to that program. We don't have though, the permit piece. So it's a manual entry there for permits.
I'm, I don't know enough to appreciate the tie-in between billing and permitting.
Yeah. So under Amanda, so development services, somebody comes in and connects.
Amanda is.
Our, our, our development service system for permitting.
Oh, it's not a person?
No.
No.
Geez, okay.
That's all right. The same thing. I'm like, who's Amanda?
Oh, she's busy.
I thought it was like the permitting director.
Amanda does everything. So Amanda, our, our development services permitting system, they bring in permits to properties. Then though we, that information is brought over. Yes, for construction, new development.
Yeah.
You know, maybe redeveloping an area, right? Permits changed. Then that information, once they're connected, it moves over to our billing system. And they manually enter those new customer accounts with the EDU counts, you know, to start that billing process that usually follows with water.
So once the customer has, I'm thinking about a new homeowner. Or a new business. Gets to turn the water on and so it flushes and flows. That's when it's no longer, it transitions from Amanda over to Open.
We probably, we probably put them on earlier than that, but waiting for water source didn't turn on.
Yeah. But it goes from the builder who's making sure there are no leaks in the water system and everything to the person. Got it. Thank you.
So that's how Clean Water Service.
Well, but billing information pushes to CWS financial system of record.
Yeah. So that's, that is now in our, in our new system. It, every night, all of the billing and payment and adjustment information comes over from Open to our Oracle GL post automatically. That wasn't the case in the in-house system with, with TBWD.
Is Oracle still your ear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now with the old system, we were doing a monthly journal entry to book the receivables. So it was not timely.
And a daily cash, daily cash, daily cash. Yeah. That was a huge, that piece is a huge.
Kathy, I have a question. I am, I'm also under the weather, but I'm not contagious and I'm heavily medicated. See how long I last today, but I'm just gonna ask a, cause I do fit in this category of the unincorporated area of Washington County. And I'm wondering, since we've had some people that come testify about the billing being high. I know there's Clean Water Services and the TBWD side by side on that one page. But if people have questions of the Clean Water side, do they, who do they call?
We, we do, we, and we just, the other day got a call from a customer really upset about their bill. It was like a $600.
$135 bill. Yes.
And so we walked them through it and 500 of that was the water.
So how they would know to call us? Is it an unincorporated Washington County bill? So if you look in your notebook and pull this out, they're getting a CWS bill.
Yeah. 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 So both numbers are on there. One side of the bill is TBWD, the other side is Clean Water Services and then they submit. But there's confusion of what they're getting billed.
Yeah. We field a lot of calls for TBWD and vice versa.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
So I, I just, and this almost plays into what was just being discussed. I, this is a bigger picture comment. I will just say that when I think of efficient systems, overall customer not wanting to pay du, you know, for duplicate services. When you think of all the cities that are doing the billing, and I mean, I saw this on the Tigerd side a lot. And you look at the complexity and all those examples of the bills you provided. And all the, I'm going to say inefficiency in that just because there's so many, so many permutations and so much going on. You know, one change at CWS has to be made in 10 systems in cities and other places. I, like, I just look at this and say, this big picture, not efficient.
But so there's further conversation to be had because the cities, through their city councils and mayors, also need to be engaged on changes. This isn't a decision just on our own.
Totally agree. And I, I, I'm just saying that from a, like, I think over the next decade, we need to be thinking about, we in every city council, every mayor, need to be thinking through, what is the, what is the big picture of this look like making more sense over the long term?
Yeah. It was interesting in the study that Moss Adams did back 2008. Two of the things they listed there are still issues today where they talked about the bill increases are, are going up. And that it will be confusing and be negative to the customer when they see a large bill bimonthly with us billing together. That was one thing they mentioned. And then they talked about, you know, just the scalability for us would be limited in, in staying. To, to, it's interesting how some of the same things that are still an issue now, were an issue then. And also water shut off, our inability, if we do leave water environment, to shut off water as a payment.
So we have, we've been through eight slides on billing and we have four more to go and 15 minutes to do it.
All right.
Including discussion.
Yep. And so that was how we bill our customers. This is how we, the customers are billed by the cities.
Five on that side, seven over here.
Yeah. And yeah, Beeberton, Corinna's Forest Grove, Hillsborough, Sherwood, Tigerd and Tuahlet. They each have their own local rates that they bill for their local service on their billing. And then they pay, they bill our regional rate for us that's set by Clean Water Services Board. Monthly, there's a remittance example in there for Hillsborough for you. We get one of those from each of those cities each month. They all have to be calculated differently because they all track revenues and collections differently at each.
That's what that additional pay, the monthly remittance.
Yeah, that's exactly what that is. Yeah. So like I said, there's in, inconsistency along the areas of how things are billed, how we remit back in. And, and as we mentioned before, that, that lack of access to customer information that is there related to this billing structure. On the industrial customers, so there's 59 industrial customers in Washington County that contribute significant discharge of the system. We bill Clean Water Services bills those. Of those 59, four are unincorporated Washington County. The remainder of those are in those, the large cities, that this is separate cities that bill. We've charged the row fee for the city. So if they. Right away fee. They, they, for the cities that have industrial customers within their limits. And they charge a right-of-way fee, we do put that on their bill and charge it and we remit it to those cities. And, and there's a local component of our rate. I think it's around 16% that we apply to that industrial charge and remit to those cities also. We do that monthly.
How does that get set?
That is set based on our rate. It's a split of our rate between regional and local.
Got it.
For basements. Not for right now, but I would like to see a listing of all those customers, just, but not right now. Um, the industrial customers?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that too, just to have a better sense of like, who's putting a lot of stuff in the system?
But I'll tell you, Hillsborough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the biggest.
Oh, yeah.
With the intel.
I could have guessed that too, but beyond that, I have less.
Foods, for example, and your district probably is on that.
I'm particularly interested in the unincorporated area.
Oh, yeah. Which ones are there? Yeah.
Analog.
Research.
Probably one of those.
And really that ends my piece of how we bill. And I would mean, moving over to Karen, talk about the customers that we interact with.
So first, I'm going to do a little bit of a survey. There's about roughly 17 of us in here. And I don't care where you live, but my first question is, do you pay, who in here pays a utility bill? And I mean you, not your partner or your roommate. Raise a hands. Okay. How many of you, you all can participate too, how many of you are paperless? Okay. Now I'm going to dive in a little bit deeper. How many of you actually read the communications that come with your bills? Not your bill itself, I mean the communications, which is.
Can we speak for our partners?
You can. Speak for your partners. Okay.
That seems a total geek. It's like me.
I, I, I appreciate that geek. So.
I would say rarely. I don't know how to raise my hand for rarely. I do, I'm aware they're there and I occasionally look at them.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you, why rarely?
Like, why do I do it sometimes and not others?
Right. Why not all the time?
Depends on how, how busy I am, whether I know there's something that in, interesting might be in it.
It's out of your control.
I'm not an average customer probably, right? I know, I know more about when things might be coming out that are interesting or not.
Right. Well, and the, the, I appreciate that because one of the things that we're dealing with is, you know, it's not an excuse, but the communications landscape is very fragmented. So there has to be different ways that we communicate with folks. Because they have different needs and they receive information differently. So one of the things, and I, the reason I label this an opportunity is we do have the opportunity to do inserts. And by inserts for our bimonthly, I should say, inserts for TBWD joint customers and our ones directly billed by CWS. We have this opportunity to do what we call buck slips. So one side's in Spanish, one side's in English.
Buck slips?
They're called buck slips. That's a, I know it's, because it's like a $1 bill, which should the folks remember what a $1 bill looks like nowadays, but.
So it's still only 30 some odd percent of our customers.
Yeah, we, right. Cause it, right, exactly. And of those that we bill, of those 60,000, you know, roughly 30,000 of those are paperless. So those folks, when they go to pay their bill, when they go to the open online portal, the only way they have the ability to see this same information is if they read what's on that main page when they go there. So we find that I've, if you remember on June 10th, I mentioned that between January and June, our top five pages, number two was pay your bill. So people are going to pay their bill. They're going to our website to pay their bill. They go to the portal, which you'll see on the next page. I won't share that right now. But you have to not just go to your bill, you have to stop and you have to read all the information that's on that website. So just giving you a kind of a landscape.
I'm not served, I, I have a separate billing system. I'm not in CWS.
Right.
So do you, you do have automatic pay. So people don't have to go to this.
Exactly. Exactly.
I assume.
Right. And then the yearly opportunity and why I say it's a yearly opportunity, those customers that are billed by the cities, right? We have to just establish these great relationships with them. We don't currently have an MOU or IGA that says, you need to, you need to work with us to put this amount of information. And it's basically our communications team and the relationships we've built to say, hey, can we, we're about to talk about our rates for this year. Can we put an insert in your bills? Can we work with your city newsletters? And it's all kind of, you know, up to them what they would like to do.
Now theirs, we've only done, took, taken action on two of the IGA. So we have an opportunity for the next five.
So those are opportunities. And then the, obviously I spoke about the portal, which I'll show in a second. And then the, we do have the bill explainers, which is on our webpage where you can go in and say, hey, I live here, this is what my bill looks like and kind of get some more information on that. The other opportunity we have that I didn't mention here is then when customers move within the, within the district, their service area, is they do receive a welcome kit or a welcome brochure. So, and let me prephrase that, that is just the CWS joint customers and the CWS only customers who get a welcome brochure. So those are just, hey.
City customers are not getting.
I don't know what they receive.
Or not getting the CWS one.
No, they're not. And I, like I said, they may have some information in there about their waste water storm area utility. I'm not sure. I, I can get that information, but that's not something I have control over. So. Just giving up an idea of what they see. And then obviously the challenges are, again, this is the customer portal for CWS only and joint customers that we do collect collaboratively with TBWD. We have an opportunity to put the news and updates on the bottom there. And then, uh, which I don't have, when you go to the main billing page, uh, when they log in, there are some, uh, carousels and hero images and hero, uh, large blocks of content where we can put information. So, um, so an opportunity like a website to talk about what we need to talk about. So, um, for example, you know, we have, uh, the news and updates right there is the budget committee. Right now, we have information about our clean water, our CWA and stuff like that. So there is timely information we can put on there if they are going here.
You know, here I am, been a board member. I love your website. I've been really using it a lot more this year. I'm on your Facebook. I don't know if I'm on your Instagram, but I don't use, those are the only two social media channels I use. You know what my problem is? I don't scroll down enough.
Exactly. And this is a scroll alone.
Fan. Come on, Catherine, get with it.
But how do we then try to get above the fold as we call it? So that is a challenge. And I will say, one of the great things, we talked about a great relationship with TBWD. We have a great relationship with TBWD and their communications team. So, um, that, that's, we work on things together. So I will just say that, that's been a, a great advantage. So. Any other, so the other thing I was going to mention is that we do also try to do Spanish and English. And that, um, it's just a complex structure. I've been here almost 25 years. Cause I started when I was 18. And we, we want to make sure that we are just trying, I mean, I get confused too. So trying to find out all those additional opportunities, we have to get into city newsletters. We can't just rely on the bills to communicate with folks. And as you've all seen, I think a few of you are the ones that actually read their, that information. So we receive things differently. So.
Is the city newsletter the right method? Or would we prefer to send our own? I mean, you mentioned, we can't do the welcome kit, which would be nice to do. So maybe it's back to the first bullet about having access to our customers billed by cities. It doesn't seem like that should be that difficult to deal with through IGAs, especially if we're going to be helping, using that information for, because for the benefit of the cities. And what we heard a little bit in the meeting with the cities and the chair was, yeah, we're feeling a lot of calls and issues indirectly. So if maybe it's, if it's posed as an opportunity for us to help, deal with some of those things more directly. And I don't know how to best leverage that. But does that seem fairly easy to get through is I guess one question. Cause this will take time for sure, even if we're going to go on our own, this will, this is not going to happen very quickly.
Correct.
So we're going to have this long, relatively long period of time.
I mean, this conversation about how you reach people, frankly, the cities don't, we have the same conversations about the newsletters and the bill inserts in, in the city role. Like the part of it is just how to get people to pay attention and everything. And I don't think there's a magic solution to that, that I've seen so far. So I understand it's even more difficult because we don't have direct, as much direct. I understand it's even more difficult because we don't have direct, as much direct customer conversation, but I don't think the cities have it much better or other entities that are in direct communication.
That was my, is paper, is getting them paper even the, that was my other question. I mean, I'm old school. I, when I get stuff that is not the bill, I'm actually more likely to look at it. The bill's the bill. Um, it just gets paid off, you know, it just gets paid. But I'm also not on clean water service, so I get stuff and I I'm curious what it has to say and and I will look at the paper, but.
And we're not alone in this. I mean, you PGE, Northwest National, any utility service. And the more we have, uh, offloaded any work associated with billing, like writing checks and all that.
Yeah.
It, um, it becomes more and more difficult, but seems to me that there's, must be a large group of, uh, a large pile of information from many other utility sources to access in terms what's the best methodology for reaching customers.
It, it needs to be multiple and it needs to be in the format that they want to receive it in. And that is why we do survey work and we try to understand what they need to know, how they want to receive it. And I will say really quickly that that we're going to come to you with our biannual customer awareness and satisfaction survey again this fall, which we do every two years and we ask that question. So but it just needs to be intentional and we need to understand where our customers are.
So before we move to the next slide, how many of the board members were able to go through the rate billing explainers that we got? Yeah. Any questions on those? I thought it was really interesting. Self-identified geek here to work on the percentages of the brown versus the blue. And then when you add in just the water, what the overall percentage is. So, uh, you know, water, sewer, swim. When you do the overall percentage, CWS, for example, changes, uh, to be about forty-five percent of the total bill versus sixty-five for just the sewer and the swim. So uh, keep that in mind when, when you have conversations with uh, mayors or city councilors, um, the math helps. So. Questions for the board about billing? Oh, I assume you went through everything.
Is there one more slide?
One more slide.
So this question to investigate alternative billing options, what would help me is that timeline, right? So hearing that the the open date and the stabilization, the not just, yeah, open, uh, being reminded that that went live in twenty twenty-one. I don't think that was documented here. And, uh, what I, before pulling the lever on a yes, excuse me, I would like to see just a sketch of, so what might that project look like? Right? Uh, and just, I think, a summary table of pros and cons.
It's, it seems like it also matters on the first question about, at least I've gotten the sense that some of the cities want out of the business of billing for CWS. Am I right that that's something we're hearing?
Yes.
I mean, to me, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, that's a big part of answering question number one is like, how serious is that? I think that's going in the opposite direction of what I said earlier about simplification and, well, maybe it's not. I don't know. Depends on how you think of efficiency. But if that's really the case, then I think that makes that question even more important.
But there full city councils have not been asked the explicit question. And before we ask that explicit question, we need to have a roadmap on what it would take. So if you could come back to us in, for example, the October or November work session day with what that sketch will look like, then we can follow up and, and ask them the particular question. And that includes our knowing what might it cost? Because we have to integrate that into our CIP. The other piece for me is, uh, we've, we've talked about assistance as a separate topic. But how does that interface with, uh, the current system and a future alternative system? So to me, that's another piece in, but that decision is over here, but it affects that.
They're very connected.
Chair, can I ask a question? Just to clarify, you said October and November to bring that back, but if we have that earlier and we can get a work set.
We don't.
Don't have the bandwidth. Okay. Because going back to director.
So sorry to step back.
Yeah.
We're in a new age. And I won't use crass language about it, but we are really going to have to leverage our regular work session days.
That's why I asked. I appreciate that.
The board, the Washington County Commission, uh, is going to be reviewing this at our August fourteenth meeting. Uh, and we now have a September eleventh one as well as the board. So, uh, going into the October day for CWS board will have a much better sense. Because the whole federal funding environment and other goings on is the, the most polite way I could say is it is sucking the life out of state, county and city government. And we're, we're on the leading edge. We are ahead. We are actually ahead of the city of Portland and Mottlemah County on this. It, it's kind of stunning.
Director Snyder, I wanted to say, I, I have not had lots of conversations with mayors, except for this past Monday from a few. But with city managers, what I'm hearing is, we, take your time and do this right. Whether they're not coming in with preconceived.
Okay.
Opinions. They want us to really grapple with this, come up with alternatives.
Yeah, because if the customers in their cities are unhappy with how the changeover goes, it only makes their lives harder.
And part of my aha moment, I did not know we did this two thousand eight Los Angeles study. And when I looked at that, I was like, wow, we did a pretty deep dive. And maybe that's an approach we should take to do this. That's just an idea that we've been chatting.
Should be similarly thoughtful. Yes.
And that's where I was coming to that sketch in terms of time. And, you know, I don't know if we're talking single-digit millions or hundreds of thousands or double-digit millions. That's the, that's the cost sketch.
And that, they do want to know if we, there are advantages they see, but they also want to, is it going to cost us more for current water to do it? And if so, that might offset what they feel.
Continuing with a situation that isn't good, there, there's two sides to that.
Correct.
Do we have anything more on either of these questions? Okay. I think job well done, team. Thank you very much. Uh, as far as, so, I mean, we have, we as a board have a much better understanding of this topic than we, we've had earlier this year. So thank you very much.
Well, I think we have clear marching orders as well. So.
So true. We've built in a break at this point. Um, it's up to the group if we want to take it down.
We have lunch at eleven thirty. I think it's a good idea for us to take a short break. Um, so, uh, sidebar conversations we want. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't mean for my mic to be.
The button on your.
Your mic on off. Please make it green. Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
You have. Moving on to our next topic, this is the, um, next installment of our discussion around the plan to rebuild trust. Uh, and you'll see presenters on here. This is a team effort. And, and we'll have.
CW that.
Uh, a lot of information, um, addressing a lot of follow-ups that we had. So this will be a diverse presentation. I'm covering a lot of topics and we have a couple series of questions in here too. So we'll have a leadership update on communications and engagement. We'll go, return to that chart with our resolution and order um, and update you on that. We'll talk about customer assistance. And, uh, and also about, uh, clean water insurance company updates through this. And then just noting that this began on April eighth um, with the adoption of the resolution and order. We had the CEO present an initial list of RNO updates and a initial plan, um, on April twenty-ninth. We had a more robust discussion on June tenth and then again, we're here today on July eighteenth. So I'm going to turn things over to Rick, um, to cover the next couple of slides here.
All right. Thanks, Elizabeth. Wanted to update, we've talked about, um, adding additional clean water essentials sessions to the fall and those are scheduled and in place. So we look forward to those. I've heard from several people and being out and talking to others. They found them very valuable. So, um, I think that's great. That was a really good call to continue to move forward and wait until the normal schedule, which was quite a ways out. So.
Joe, could you share with the board that actual who attended, you know, update it to the best that you guys can with the current set of city council members? And who of them has or has not taken it through the twenty-three, twenty-five cycle? So that these directors can turn to their peers, including TVWD folks and say, hey, this is a really special thing. You want to make time for this.
So I don't have the actual percentage handy, but I can, I can put those together.
Yeah.
Pretty easy to do.
Yeah.
I would say of the mayors.
I don't have data right now. I'm just asking for.
Yeah, I can put that together.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I, I think the feedback from either mayors or councilors that have attended have found value in it. They, they learned some things they didn't know and have the basics. Perfect world. Everybody would go through that in terms of our partner cities and special districts. So.
Now, um, I know I asked this the other day, uh, but could you share with the board why the public tours were paused?
Sure. Um, we're, we're on pause right now. Um, we're looking at policies, um, related to, uh, ensuring where we are with, um, minor miners attending public tours, basically, um, due to the events that were in the paper with respect to the certain individual.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. You told me that and then I forgot it.
Yeah.
Thank you for the reminder.
We just want to, out of a very great abundance of caution, felt like it was appropriate to take that pause.
Protect dark.
Yep. July fourteenth, we talked a little bit about, um, we did have that meeting, um, a CWS focused chair mayor session. It was great. Joe, Elizabeth, myself were there. Obviously, the chair was there. We did talk about billing, among other things. There's a lot of interest. To look at that, uh, from the mayor's perspective, I think they do see some advantages to, to that system, but do recognize there's, there's a lot of factors and considerations in, in moving through this. So, um, I can't remember any other topics, Joe, or.
The other thing that we were planning on doing anyway, but I'm hearing again from city managers and we heard from some of the mayors is they would like us to come to their city council meetings.
Oh, yeah.
And reengage at least once a year and provide a, an update about our partnership and, and other questions that they might have. So we're working with, uh, starting to do that in September. We'll probably hit that throughout the fall.
Yeah.
So another, um, message that I've heard, uh, throughout the course of this year is city managers have appreciated your regular attention, uh, attendance at their meetings. But they want our CEO to be present. Doesn't have to be every single meeting, but they want presence. So that's an expectation. We need to make sure we're, we, the board are, are aware of that.
Correct. And Rick came to one of them already and introduced himself and, uh, he's on the distribution list, but he always sees what's going to be discussed.
Yeah.
Sometimes Elizabeth also is on the distribution list and she attends. So.
Yeah.
And the, one of the other learnings too, uh, from the meeting on July fourteenth is not unexpectedly, each city council has its own personality. And, uh, so there were some tidbits in terms of how best to engage with the city council. So I'm very comfortable with your awareness of that and acting accordingly. But just like, um, we have a system where our staff knows what our, our external meetings are and that we have what we in our external communication summary email for the current week and looking the week out. And you guys are on that list or used to be.
I am.
There's also a section in there about intergovernmental building, build meetings. Sorry. So that we have visibility into, uh, city councils asking our subject matter experts to come in, whether it's talking about affordable housing and homelessness or road construction or what have you. So it, it goes both ways.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Those are, well, we'll talk a little bit more about city partner feedback, but those items are external focused, um, as far as within district and for our staff. Um, we, we've mentioned the all leaders meeting, which is the supervisory group. I'll have on the next slide, talk a little bit more in detail about feedback that we received with our employee advisory council. We ended up having just a really informal town hall, which was great. Lots of folks had lots of questions for me. Elizabeth was there as well and I'll, I'll share some of their thoughts. Um, what's nice about the EAC is it represents all the departments and all different levels throughout clean water services. So not just, um, you know, a leadership kind of supervisory perspective, which was really good. And then continuing to meet with other programs and, and departments, um, as, as time allows for, for them and myself. Um, you've seen the all staff emails, where we're at with budget, um, and organizational shifts. We're planning to get our updated org chart on our website, hopefully next week. So it's very clear who's, who's reporting to whom. Um, the emails are great, but having that, uh, is something that we heard at the EAC and.
That word she did to show that or recharge was very helpful for we have the fighting process.
Oh, good.
So, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And I always need to make sure I have the latest one. I'm carrying around the April twenty-ninth one, so that's probably out of date. My bad.
We're working on updates, so that's.
Is that, okay.
We do have, I'll ask Anna not to put, is the new one ready that the more, the one that was in the bud, the one in the budget?
If it's in the budget, I have access to it.
No, an updated one from the version that we can, we could hand out hard copies than that. Um, we were planning to get that.
There's a perfect.
Yeah.
Before, if you have it beforehand through email, that's what I think.
I will, was planning to email it. Um, yeah.
See, you can only exceed expectations.
I set the bar low enough at all.
That is not what I'm saying. WS bar is pretty high, folks. Come on.
Okay.
People don't know it.
And then the, the hotline, um, it has been publicized. Um, employees are, are very aware of its existence. Um, and that gives a direct connection from them to the board.
We have one report, right?
Yeah, I think there's been.
Just one. Yeah.
Yeah.
One, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think it's changed. Yeah, I don't think it's changed.
Really appreciate the new uh constituent uh response system too, I mean. I think you've been doing a, a fine job, right, I received pipeline, I received the, the Joe Gull, I know I don't have the right name for it, but the just call gull button at the bottom.
The goal button, yeah.
Yeah, so, oh, good.
Yeah. Um. These are some of the things um in particular are related to the EAC um, so employee advisory.
There's a fear of losing goal share.
Fear of losing goal share, yeah, they've.
That's not the plan of record.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Can you be clear on what, I mean, I've, I've kind of picked up on it in the budget process, but I saw it here and I at least feel like I need to know a little bit more about what is being referenced there.
The goal share program.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also, I think we're seeing some customer complaints that speak about it too.
Yeah.
Uh, I asked that we.
Go ahead.
I think I asked that uh for an upcoming learning day that we get just the basic primer. On how goal share works, we, we got one years ago, it may have been all verbal.
Just a performance based payment type of incentive.
That all employees have, yeah.
Well, goal share is, is actually um, it's been around, well.
It's quite.
Kathy for. Way before any of our time.
Yeah.
Um, had, we, we identify what we consider stretch goals, all departments develop some stretch goals and. There, you know, the, the hit rate is, is generally around, you know, maybe seventy to eighty-five percent.
Okay.
And there are things that we, and, and then those get elevated up all through, you know, to the leadership team to decide what those are. And then there, so there is an incentive to, to hit your goal share piece. Um, but happy to give you a, yeah, it's a pretty, there, it's, there's a whole system and there's metrics and there's reviews, so I happy to come back with a more detailed. Um, discussion on that, but that's the basics of it.
Thank you.
What we also, what I also need to better understand is uh how is it set up? Her uh job tier, is it all the same or not, uh because when I went back. This year and re-reviewed the, the CEO contract, I believe, if I remember it correctly. Is we added two percent each year. And so that went up pretty steep, so was part of the total compensation that we saw reported in the press.
Hmm. Okay, I will just say that goal share is the same for everybody, everybody, it's, it's a district wide and no matter where you are in the organization, it's meant to, and that's why every. Group contributes and everybody gets the same for this particular piece. Um, equity, I, I'll just, it, this is an issue everywhere. Um, the board is very aware of, there's lots of concerns with just everything that's going on and so just a general sense that the same is shared here among district staff, you know, we, we've worked hard to, to make a very. Open, collect, uh, open, warm environment, everyone feeling belonging and, and there's just concerns in general about how things are and then. How things might come down on clean water services similar to what they would be happening at Washington County and all types of government agents.
So your visibility into the board of commissioners work sessions, you've had a chance to see how we hired an outside consultant to perform. Employee listening sessions and engagement with our community-based organization nonprofits, and those final reports will be coming to us on Tuesday, so. Yeah.
We. Elizabeth and I are very active listeners, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Been, been watching it very closely.
Yeah.
Cause we appreciate our employee engagement.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, I, we're being direct here, there was people somehow, well, they, they were hearing there was a hiring freeze, meaning we're not, you know, we're not moving forward with advertising or moving forward with any position, so we, we're calling that a misconception. We do have um vacant FTE positions, we are, we revisited.
Strategic.
We're being strategic.
Just like we've been doing at Washington County for what, two or three years?
Yes, and so you've seen some of the district wide, there's, there's some pretty high level positions we're not going to fill, that creates efficiencies in the budget. Um, where, but we are not freezing all hiring, we're just reprioritizing the ones that are already there and we are. Looking at those vacancies and, and ensuring the business cases still sound for some of the other ones um that have not yet been filled. And. Yes. It's like forty, you know, roughly ten, ten-ish percent. And then this is great, having a voice and creating and prioritizing efficiencies, so we've, we've heard the board challenge us to find efficiencies. The staff are up for the challenge and it was not really a, I wouldn't say it was a concern, but just an ask of, hey, if we have. Good ideas, uh, how do we make sure we, we get those heard?
I think yes, they're leading that, actually.
Yeah.
Not just having a voice.
Yes.
I think the best, at least my experience and observation is the most transformational things in that space and many industries have come from frontline employees.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And I honestly think we do a pretty good job of that, but enforcing that again and, and making sure people are motivated and, and doing that is, is going to be critical. Um, so the Gallup results.
Um, which are, it's an annual or biannual survey?
Annual.
Yeah. Local, we say local level engagement, meaning within your, within your group, um, the Gallup numbers were, were pretty steady, but organizationally satisfaction. And trust have dipped, which frankly, if they didn't, I'd say Gallup isn't, we're not getting accurate information from Gallup, so um. The other piece that I think the supervisors are, we, we were learning from Gallup and particular supervisors have dipped, they're feeling kind of in the middle of how do I? Work with my own staff and am I getting the support, you know, that I wished that I was getting from above, so you know, that's incumbent on the executive leadership team and myself to make sure they're feeling they're getting what they need. Um. Well, and this, we already mentioned the hotline.
Okay, yep.
Joe, did you wanna?
I can, I can take.
Or, okay.
Um, and board members may know some of this already.
Yeah.
Uh, this goes back to when Diane was CEO, we invited uh. All the city managers to meet, so Diane and I met with Tewallatin, um, and then I met with Hillsborough. Uh, by myself, Cornelius, uh Diane participated in Sherwood by myself and then Beaverton uh by myself. So I continue for the other cities to put the invitation out to sit down and talk through where we are as a. Uh, utility with everything that's going on and answer their questions, uh, but can't force them to meet, but yeah, the invitation's there.
Hmm.
And the cities that we've met with, we've had good insight, had good conversations uh with their city managers, and it's usually not just the city managers, if there's assistant city managers, they participate, sometimes it's public works directors and things like that, so. Um, I also just met with uh. Uh, the new city manager Tiger this week, one-on-one, um, as he gets uh settled in his new position, he's from Arizona, so he's learning Oregon and had lots of questions. He's going to CWS Essentials in September and um, I think it's going to be a good, good relationship.
Was he asking questions like, what's water?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Pretty used though.
Yeah.
So. So that's a good thing, the key topics or themes that I've been hearing in all these meetings is that, you know, they are still committed to our partnership. Uh. They understand the value, they want us to be a successful utility and work with the cities, I've heard that theme. Um, I think we've been a little worried about this, has there been damage in terms of a relationship, and I don't sense that. Uh, at least from the city staff. Uh, they wanted to know, depending on the timing of the meeting, how are you doing on the R and O, are you making progress, were you, you know, are you behind and things like that, they're watching that, we're sharing information as we make progress on that. Uh, they want to know about the quick domicile, are you going to stay in Hawaii or are you going to do something, that's a theme that I've heard from city staff.
And I need a quick reminder, is that our decision or the quick board's decision? Or are we going to get to that?
It's a discussion today, right?
I think it's part of today's discussion, so.
Checking just specifically the domicile location?
Yeah.
That, that ultimately can be a large decision.
Because that's how the determination is whether or not someone to create another cap. Oh.
So clean water insurance.
I was doubting my, my memory, so I really appreciate that, thank you.
Uh, as part of the R and O, the audit is something that they're very curious, are you on track, have you hired somebody, what's the timeline, uh, whatever comes out of that, they are going to look very closely at that, so, as they should. And then as we've mentioned, they're very curious about billing, are you going to do a deep dive in billing and? We think you should, they see pros and cons to either path, but they want us to do a really sparse analysis with them, as you said, Chair, we can't do this in isolation, they have to be part of this.
Hey, do they know that um? If, if they have some great folks on their audit committee that uh they would like to have serve as eyes on our audit committee?
Yeah, one or two more seats.
One seat.
One seat?
Yeah, I would like to have the problem of, hey, we have more interest, how about considering another seat?
Wow.
And then uh I think I've heard this consistently to keep tho- those lines of communication open, uh. I've been besides the newsletter each month, which is really the audience's elected officials, but the city managers get those as well. Consistent information primarily for me as we move forward, it's been well, I've been appreciative. And they've been incredibly supportive of CWS, I consistently get, how's everyone doing, how's the morale, how's the staff doing, so. That's reinforcing our relationship.
I've been wondering. Uh, as we've seen, uh, I've watched the national TV news, uh, I try to watch it every, every night, you know, it's a controlled dose, you always fast forward, you can turn it off. Uh, there's reality, Catherine, uh, so, so we've certainly been seeing for the last several years now flooding, stormwater, cloud bursts. Uh, throughout the United States and before that over in, in Europe as well, and uh, so we've had some increased cloud bursts here, but so far we've been pretty, pretty lucky, have you been hearing? City managers wondering, okay, stormwater wise, how? How prepared are we, what if we get one of these? What if we enter this new era of storm after storm after storm in the summer in our dry months? Cause I, am I just the, the crazy one?
Though, uh, that's a great question, I, I have not heard that directly from city managers, uh, with everything that's on their plates, um, a lot of the areas, as you recall, when we had the presentation last year. A lot of the areas that are prone to flooding are in unincorporated areas.
Yeah, yeah. But really, the, these events. Uh, a lot has improved with uh old Beaverton Creek, Cedar Mill Creek and, you know, Cedar Hills Boulevard, but some of these events we're hearing about. And seeing. City streets, bridges, the inundation is incredibly impressive, so, you know.
Well, in contrast, I remember a presentation, and I think it was at a metro meeting, this has been years ago when I was mayor, they were saying over the next fifty to sixty years, we're going to become a desert.
Hmm.
Uh, our rainfall's going to continue to decline and all of that, right now, I watched the weather report last night, we are three inches, I think, under right now. So it always cau- causes me to think, so how's Tag doing?
Yeah.
You know, we got to keep that one.
Yeah.
That one going, but I mean, so just in contrast to that, but yeah, you, you go on Facebook or Instagram and you look at videos of that flooding, it's absolutely astounding, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, bloody experiences in the late nineties. Yeah, that's right, and then we had that uh learning day at the.
At Durham?
No, no, we had, it's uh when we had the whole climate strategy that day, and uh you guys did a great job of giving us the overview of the climate scenarios and whatnot, that has always stuck with me, so. I want to make sure that sometime over the next two plus years that. You bring what's an update of that to, to the board, um. Cause there's that dry scenario and then there's a, a wet summer scenario, I guess is, is my shorthand for it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, we definitely worry about the climate part, um, you know, just embarking on a, on the next level project for the remodeling to look at summer, we've always focused on wet weather, so the next generation is really regionally downscaling and looking at summer. So we'll update you on that, and then I know we have the climate action roadmap, which will help us also get everybody on the same page of what we're looking at for adaptation and mitigation, um, so.
Am I right in assuming the biggest risk there, or one of the biggest is the, just the temperature of the twelve river and the ability to manage it within the, okay.
That's our focus.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm connecting the dots here, I could think of other impacts, but that's the main one or a main one?
That is a main one for summer, sure, um, and so we've got a, a model of the Tewallatin and, and we have one person that, you know, he's. He's got that dialed and now the next step is someone else is looking to, to develop the summer climate modeling work that we can mesh those two pieces together, and I'll say the ability to have that climate modeling is, is grown exponentially. From where it used to be, I think we're at a point in time where we can really trust where that's going, but our staff member is actually getting his PhD through a, a project with Portland State to build this model, which is pretty, pretty awesome. Yeah.
Yeah, so um, I'm looking forward to having some clarity in my mind. Maybe in October, November around the. I'll label it chaos through the presidential administration and Congress, and the underlying topic is. We've gone from, okay, there's going to be a uh Skoggins dam replacement project to. What's happened budget-wise on all those things that were funded before, is there even going to be a safety of dams project and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a BOR, you know, all that stuff, so.
The modeling will help us very clearly point out the damage that, if they, if we were not to do the improvements needed and they went with this, well, we're going to just restrict and lower the level, the modeling will tell us.
Yeah.
All, all the very bad things that would happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Back to you, Richard.
I, I think, I think it's me.
Okay.
No. I hold the clicker.
I do.
You have those red buttons.
Yeah.
I have.
Yeah.
It's a team effort, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh. Back to our resolution and order twenty-five five, um, on our June tenth meeting, you all received uh exhibit A with a, a breakdown of um the various actions, this is in the packet that's online, it's in your. Finders just after the PowerPoint, what we've done is make additions in yellow and bold to make it um very, very clear what has happened since June tenth. Um, I'm really.
Can we ask questions?
Yes, please.
On, on the first page, item thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what I was just wondering, three hundred and fifty-one staff members have attended, and that's of the total of four hundred and thirty, she was a. Okay.
We actually, I think number retired from the time they signed up for the training versus the actual.
Really, wow.
So that number is.
No, but that's, that's a three fifty-one, I, I was trying to gauge, was that a good number, is that a low number, from my viewpoint, that's a really good number.
And, and. And and just to brag a little bit on behalf of Christine and Kathy. Since we hit print, there's actually been twenty sessions and three hundred and eighty-six staff members have attended. So we are.
Power of the pen has updated the slide. So next page, item three. Uh, report findings to the board by June thirtieth. So I'm remembering that I went on vacation as of the nineteenth. Did I miss something? Did it come to us?
We have prepared the written guidelines, but we haven't gotten it to the board.
Oh, okay, so it's TBD. That's all. Um, and item four, due May first. I was just wondering if that has been published to the board. Uh, as one question, and then I don't need the answers today. I just wanted to let you know what my questions were. And then, uh, since board members also travel in our official capacities for CWS. We probably need a training. And then. Keep going, page one, two, three, four. Oh, yep, there's page number Catherine, item seven. Uh, present analysis to the board. You're doing it. July eighteenth. Um, then item eight, district will seek board or district board approval for future vacancies. My question is when or how?
Yep, and we will, we will cover that future.
Process questions. Um, July, let's see, the next page, uh, July all day work session. Yay, that's that's us today. And then I was wondering, uh, you know, as I mentioned, I appreciate the constituent reports. And the Washington County system has moved to a new piece of software. So I'm wondering uh, about how you might wanna think about. Uh, having an annual summary report or even a six-month report that says that. Uh, just documents the number of constituent comments received or or processed. Similarly, with the number of customer billing explanation interactions. Who are doing really well in both of those categories as I invented them. And uh, so uh, all indications are very positive from my viewpoint. So I want you to know that. And one way I know that you can give yourself credit for the good work you're doing. Is to look at those numbers yourself.
I'd be including them when you're doing the sort of presentations at the city councils. Kind of information as well.
That's all.
Great.
I just seem to have a. Unstationable. Level of curiosity that keeps popping its head up. Thank you.
With that, I don't have other high-level remarks because in part we have. Um, additional information on the forensic investigation and quick, which I think are the areas where. Um, as Joe noted on city feedback, um, and just in what we're seeing in constituent inquiries. Those are two areas where folks want a lot more visibility. They're covered in the R and L, but I might transition to the deep dive on those two areas.
I'll take that. Thank you, Elizabeth. So um, in new packet, under exhibit C is the actual contract that we signed with Moronis Analytic. It's a forensic um, auditor. So they, they're doing a forensic accounting investigation, a training, travel, and meal. Expenditures by the district for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five through um, July the fifth. Um, as part of the, the, the contract was signed, um, June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the district pulled all reports that were asked for under that, um, that scope of work. That is basically the whole population that can be pulled from. We pulled those reports and submitted those to Moronis on June twenty-second. The first sample was provided to us from um, Moronis on June twenty-fourth. Um, we pulled the documents related to that sample and sent those back to them on June twenty-eighth. Um, legal and finance met with Moronis to answer questions related to the documents on June eleventh. Um, and they just sent us their second sample pool, which is sixteen. As part of this review, they're looking at, they're looking at our expenditures in those areas and comparing those to our district policies. They're um, they're looking and they're gonna be summarizing those and types of expenditure by department program. And you're looking at our policy comparison to other agencies in the region. So we are right now on task with that particular audit.
Keep that next one.
Um, so the, when upon completion of this, so we're on task. Um, the goal is on September first, uh, Moronis will complete their investigation and submit their reports to management for review and and answer questions. They'll um, complete the management responses by September fifteenth of this year. And then complete a final report then on by um, September thirtieth, that then will be presented to the board at an October event soon. Thanks, Gary.
Quick question. Uh, on that forensic investigation. Present report at CWS board meeting. I believe there was a commitment. To make that report public. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm wondering if about documenting, you know, subsequent. Publication or release. That's all.
Well, and it gets presented how important.
That will serve. I think it would be helpful to just. Six, that's all. Okay, so it'll be in the board packet. Got it.
Are we gonna get any? Advanced?
Preview?
Preview this thing before it goes public?
We'd see it when the, when the material is published for the meeting?
I'd kinda like to see it before that, just.
Yeah, I would too. I think we'd like to not be caught.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna find out same time general public finds out.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Lori Olson. I'm the risk manager. Um, nice meeting some of you for the first time. Uh, I'm here today to talk about quick and the status of the domicile review. Uh, there's something that I, I think it might be important to note is that we were in the middle of. Uh, strategic whiteboarding session when um, the domicile review came up. So we had engaged with an outside consultant, um, and Aon to do that strategic whiteboarding session, which is similar to the one that. We had in two thousand twenty-two. The point of that was really to just make sure that we're on track and that the lines of coverage that we had with quick. Were efficient and we were doing uh, on track for that, or if there were new opportunities that we should be looking at to take advantage of that. As part of that, the domicile review was part of that initial whiteboarding session, strategic review. So because of the R and O, we pulled out the domicile, as you probably know, um, and quick tracked that. The domicile um, considerations that Aon used to do that evaluation was based on benchmarking that they have. Um, survey their active captive managers. So um, this, this graph really shows what other captive owners like us. Find important when considering their domicile. And if you look at the chart, the majority of that comes with regulatory and legal. Um, that environment for captives is very important. Um, it's, it's these other uh, lower ranking. Criteria also important, but uh, the the legal and regulatory um, as well as experience. Components of a domicile came out as the survey being most important. So that's the basis of what Aon does. I know there's been a lot of questions about that.
Can you tell me what domicile experience means?
Uh, like how long they've been working with the captive?
They're the experience of the domicile.
Yeah, okay, so for this, you know, for our cases.
Their regulatory.
Yeah, but they're.
Experience and the insurance.
There's skill, there's skill development.
How many?
Wait, is it on the state or is it on the specific? That the state by which it's domiciled or is this an evaluation of? The instrument company itself?
I would, well, it's not always state, but yeah, I would say it speaks to the where it is domiciled. It could be Bermuda, could there's some Europe, you know, but it's also like Vermont, Hawaii.
The locational.
Yeah.
So the experience of the location that is acting as a domicile.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there's nowhere outside of a location that's domiciled. So they they are domiciled by location.
And it's the regulations within.
What, can you help me understand what parent company, the last one, parent company presence slash substance? Means, cause I didn't, I, my imagination couldn't figure it out.
I would probably be speculating if I answered. That's a good question. I I would have to look into that.
It might be for private. That might be specific to private. I'll speculate, cause I'm not the expert, so. Might be more related to private entities.
Parent company, that is the reference to the the parent of the captive. So in this case, it would be.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then I was just wondering, I'm I'm assuming that these categories are standard categories. Of evaluation that Aon uses. Um, and I was wondering if, cause they've, there's been a review of the domicile previously. I'm thinking about the twenty twenty-two one. Um, so are these categories similar to the original evaluation used to establish it? That prior one in twenty twenty-two as well as the current, or have they just each been unique?
Well, they, they evaluate it based on what the captive owners are given in feedback. That's important to them. So they have changed. They've evolved.
Well, I I think what I'm hearing you say is Aon has a different number of captives to evaluate. What I'm asking is, in doing evaluations, are the bottom line categories, have they been the same? Is there a through line from when the prior board of directors evaluating establishing? A domicile or a a captive, then the twenty twenty-two re- evaluation? And then now.
And wasn't that where we gave extra points for the experience in the current domicile?
I'm not asking that level of detail yet. My question is on these categories.
To to your question, Aon applies the categories across all of the evaluations that they're doing.
Yep.
Those categories have changed somewhat since the twenty twenty-two. But they're substantial.
Okay, and do we know? From the original establishment of quick? Was that evaluation, did it use some similar categories?
Many, many of the categories I've seen.
That is the only field I was looking at. Well, thank you very much.
And we.
Director Trish, you had a in-depth question.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'll wait until we get to the detailed.
So Aon updated their, the way they did the categories. We did not ask them to do this. They, they said. We have updated what we consider our standard practice to best reflect the way they do the reviews. So you do see differences in the twenty twenty-two versus the twenty twenty-five, but that was based upon. Their updating of the standards, not us saying, we'd like to change these categories and following their lead as a third party.
And I'll have a question when we get to those slides. Great.
I think that's important. Um, they they have and they evolve and they're, I think it was prudent of them to do that. Instead of just report on the same thing as time evolves and people find their experience to be different. And there's longevity in their own personal experience as a captive owner. I would imagine that these survey results change for them too. The question also, why not Oregon? Um, and if most of the. I I haven't found any feedback yet where would put Oregon on our map to be a domicile. It's not a viable option for us right now.
And I wanna make sure Commissioner Director Fie that you particularly take note of these bullets. Because you've asked and engaged with legislators on that question. About what about Oregon? So you might wanna double back with those folks. Any, thank you. I didn't mean to cut off your presentation.
Uh, we just, it's just not ready for the experience and and it's not a good fit for our portfolio at this point. Um, we're gonna continue to look at, you know, in the future at Oregon and hopefully one day it will be. Um, a viable option for us.
The second bullet is really, yeah, the point here. Yeah, they don't even do.
Well, it's one of the points. I also am not sure if if Oregon was open for business, do we? We really in the business and wanting to be the first to try it? I mean, I don't think so.
Since they don't even do it now.
Yes. And back to that previous, the question about the parent company presence. That's why it's not applicable to us because Oregon is not an option. We're if we're the, we're in Oregon, it's not an option for us. So that's why that doesn't factor in versus a private.
And you're right, we don't wanna be the first to take that chance. Um, our two thousand twenty-two domicile evaluation came back and yielded the following results based on those criteria and. Um, more in-depth criteria on those categories that were in the first slide. Um, but you'll see Hawaii, Arizona, Vermont, they, these are the states that are, have always matched us well, honestly. They, they, they've been along the ra- uh, along the, around the longest. And um, to this point, Hawaii's done really well by us, our regulatory, the way that we've been able to operate the captive with Hawaii. Has been a good experience, so um.
But the thing popped out at me is convenience for Oregon.
Yes.
How in the world is Hawaii seen as more convenient than Arizona? I just don't get.
Was that be, was that only because we were already based there?
I think part in part it was also because of the time zone. And and I will say from somebody who works with them, it does help. Like, when we are shutting down, there's still, you you can get to them at the end of the day. That I would have thought that that would be something that would be valuable, but in my own experience, it has been.
It's a one hour max for half of the year with Arizona.
Yeah. I, that's just part of it. To the conveni- I.
For that big of a point spread? Anyway.
It's interesting. It stuck out to many of us, I think.
It does, I I don't think it would hold weight for the public. That's all.
I would say that that's what the, that's what the results produce when Aon did it. As an independent consultant. And then in two thousand twenty-five, you you do see that convenience shift. Um, some of that criteria did change based on the uh, survey. Uh, benchmarking that they did, so the convenience came back different.
Gray color, uh, the beige color in these charts, by the way. Think it, it's a good scale versus just red, yellow, green.
Again, they're really close, uh, and you know, we can, we can get to the nuances of the numbers. But um, but at the end of the day, you'll see again Arizona, Arizona, Hawaii and Vermont coming to the top. And a lot of that is to to do, it has to do with their experience and how they've operated as captive domiciles for. Um, a long time with good results.
And we're gonna cut, we're gonna talk about the. Assuming we make a transition, the cost of transition.
That's what this is sound. See the last bullet.
Yep, so um. I guess to summarize, you can see that as time has gone by, Arizona has now come into play with Hawaii, although they were always a player. It's, it's something that we're looking at. Our next step is going to be to look at the redemestication analysis. We we are actively involved with that right now with Aon there. And they will come back with us to, basically, one of the big parts of that is the service providers and how that will shift. So as a captive, we have six or eight service providers, including our manage, our captive manager, but also legal. Um, our legal wouldn't transfer, uh, we'd have to get a new attorney and see what those costs are, um, also auditors. Uh, the auditor we have right now cannot operate in Arizona, so those service providers will have to shift. And there are costs that come with that, one to close it out, and then to start it up again. So we don't have those numbers for you today, but they are coming. Um, and we'll get to look at those more closely so that we can make a better decision on moving forward.
So it does, as we clarified earlier, well, it will be a board decision. So we'll be updating, we'll be meeting in, I believe, a work session format to give you the next phase with the redemestication. A little bit more specifics on Austin, and then eventually, depending on how we go, it would be yours, it will, it will be your decision.
You'll come with a staff recommendation.
We will come with a recommendation, absolutely. Schedule wise.
If I remember correctly, there are only two outside Quick board members, right? Okay, thank you. I think you got to look at from the fiscal longevity, I think you really got to look at who's providing fiscal. Advisory. One of your outside directors.
Yes.
So.
Next slide.
A question on the, on the slide about the 2025 evaluation. So when you look at the costs and the regulatory, those, those two columns are the columns that dictate what the financial advantages are to Clean Water Services in those two places, correct?
Yep.
Okay. The column of costs, does that? Is that inclusive of the regulatory opportunities that are there? Does that make sense to you?
Give an example.
I I'm thinking of if there's less regulatory involvement generally means there's less costs. So that's, that's why I'm asking what, you know, if if the cost column is all inclusive of the opportunities that a, that a less stringent regulatory environment allows for more flexibility would provide.
Yeah, I think that's kind of, that's tough because one of the things that Hawaii does well with is they provide an exam as a regulatory control, which costs money.
Yeah.
So that I, we've been told by legal that they don't have that in Arizona. So that extra set of eyes for regulatory compliance comes with the cost that we wouldn't see in Arizona. So it's not always easy to compare apples to apples with them. And that's part of the, you know, that's the main reason we do this with an outside consultant is because there's so many things that come into play, including premium like tax, the premium taxes we talked about that don't exist in Arizona, but they have other taxing mechanisms. So like same with Oregon, there are Oregon state taxes that we wouldn't necessarily see in Hawaii or maybe Arizona or vice versa, you know. That so figuring that all out should be something that we see in the re-domestication.
So, and there is a balance there between, I I'm not suggesting that no regulatory involvement is with, you you want to have a regulatory system that makes, that makes sense, but not overly.
There's a balance there, you're right. So that, so I had one question, and now this has created a second question for me. So let me do the second question. I'm thinking that as a board member, I should actually read that document versus just get these slides. You know, for, for that next steps as shown on slide 14. In order for me to appreciate, there's the value of moving it. But there are also costs, and you're going to come back to us with those costs. But I also want to make sure I'm looking at the appropriate value. So in addition to consuming that new cost information, I probably, I, I think I'm going to need to see whatever documentation Aon has for this evaluation.
And sure, that's actually in your packet.
Oh.
Exhibit D.
Yeah, I read that.
We provided you with a lot of information, but we anticipated that that may be something that you'd want to dive deeper into.
I did, I was like, oh, okay, this, yeah, I did look at this.
So that's different because it's not a written report.
Yeah.
That, that is the deliver, but that is the report. So just to clarify, you're not missing anything.
Okay.
They provided in that format. And then, and then we talked through it with them with questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, okay, because yeah, thank you for drawing my attention back to that. Okay. All right, so then to my first question. And it may be something for discussion later. One of the aspects, there's, you know, the captive insurance for, you know, taking care of the pipes and all the buildings, the plants, all that jazz. But there's also, I recall, the coverage for earthquakes. Well, Hawaii has volcanoes, so they have, there's, I assume, some experience with regard to earthquakes, because usually when volcanoes go, there's earthquakes involved. Maybe not a Cascadia earthquake, but Arizona, does Arizona have earthquakes? And does that affect the insurance coverage that a domicile in Arizona would have? Versus in Hawaii? And I don't know if the domicile has anything to do with it or the broader nationwide insurance market, so.
If I understand your question, it would be what environmental uh, situations would impact our choosing Arizona over Hawaii?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
The scope of work, yeah, yeah.
I think you even see that more when it comes to things like paid family medical leave that we have in Oregon. And how they're able to, because that's in the captive and and how those different domiciles have experienced one. And how their regulatory environment works with our captive.
So is that part of cover and regulatory? As we ponder those questions?
I think that's mostly in the cover part.
Okay.
Um, that access to coverage. And that's something that, you know, our portfolio with Quick today looks very different than how it was when we started.
There it is.
So.
Got it.
When we talk about those decisions that we've made along the way and these evaluations for domicile, there's so many different factors that come in each one. Because our portfolio is constantly changing, take, we've taken things out like dental and vision, and we've added five or six other lines that we didn't originally have. So when they're doing that evaluation, I just spoke about the survey, but they're also looking at Quick's portfolio to say, okay, in your environment, what's the regulation? How are all these other things factoring in? So that can change the scores from time to time based on just our line of coverages that we have.
But it's interesting, dental is, I mean, that was cited as one of the original reasons Hawaii was selected, I think. That's not even in, we're not using.
This year, as of January 25, we went self fully insured for that. So it's no longer, it's no longer in the captive.
So when we go through that next steps, then in terms of learning more about what redomiciling may mean, we may end up having further questions on, on page eight of the detailed domicile matrix.
Yeah, so I, I have a question, you know, because I wasn't aware that dental had come out.
Yeah, it was documented in our budget for the self-insurance.
Right, yeah. But let's take it back a step further, who makes that decision?
Is it?
Our health benefits staff.
Well, I don't know that that's true. I want to know what the impact of the, of Quick and the board of directors of Quick are in relationship directly.
There's a relationship between.
So I want to, I don't really understand what the, what the cascade effect of the decision-making is there. And does the Quick board of directors just do what are, what we direct them to do in relationship to what's covered?
Well, in that case, there isn't anything left to be put into the captive with dental?
No, we're talking about how that decision was made.
I I couldn't speak to that, I I don't.
I think it, it, it goes to the CEO, who was also the managing director for Quick, looking at the cost of coverage and the risk pool. Because I remember having one-on-one conversation about this in my monthly, or no, my, whatever pace it was on, one-on-ones with the CEO.
So this was a business decision.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
But what I'm asking for is, I don't know, I, I, I don't know, I can't define what the responsibility of the Quick board is as well. I, you know, I have trouble with understanding that in relationship to the direction from Clean Water Services. This can happen at a later time, but I I don't expect to understand that right now. But I think it's important as we move forward.
A good example of a change to, that would be illustrative of what the, I mean, understanding that at a detailed level would be helpful for all of us to understand the Quick Board's role. I think I have an idea of the answer, but I'd want to hear it.
Well, I think I did too, but then questions come my phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it'll also help in your regular one-on-ones now that you have them with the acting CEO, general manager.
Yeah, it's, even though it's out of, it's not in Quick, we're still, it's still becoming in Quick. I'm dealing with the audit right now, and those, we're still working with the dental coverage and stuff, so.
And one of the points on the other slide that we were going to engage in further discussion on is how do we, should those relationships are the way they are today between, and and I think that's something, no matter what, we want to revisit and better and and relook at, given the things that have happened. If does that provide some comfort slash clarity, that's on the next step.
Peace, all that.
Less perfect time to do it, but even if we were not to, I think that would be quick.
Am I correct in tracking what you're talking about is the Quick Board, CWS Board relationship?
In part, yeah.
Well, however you want to label it, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Is. Because it's got to be a line item in our planning.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, on this, on this specific question, on this slide, I I want to make sure, and I want to feel confident that we're making decisions for the right reasons. I don't think a politically or optically convenient decision is what I'm looking for. I'm looking for the right decision, and I worry that in the analysis that at least so far has been done, Hawaii and Arizona look pretty similar-ish to me. I mean, we're talking about a rating system with lots of things in it, it's not super precise. They both look pretty similar, we're already set up in one. It's going to take a fair bit of effort to try to change all that, which means other things don't get done when you're putting a lot of effort into that. There's always things you learn afterwards that are a surprise, that maybe were not convenient. So to me, there's transaction costs, not just in the financial, but in the, the people and the unpredictability and everything else. So when, when I'm being asked to make this decision, I want to be confident that we're, we have information and we are confident we're making the decisions for the right reasons, not because the optics of it look good.
I think we're already all there.
Okay.
You've just brought more voice to it today. But I want to take us back to that Aon document on seven and eight. And I appreciate that we've used and experienced captive domicile company to do this examination. But one of the things I'm wondering about is how their state environment is working to continue to improve the captive suite, so to speak. And I don't know if that is already part of what's here in seven and eight or not. So I think that's another thing that I'll want to come back to when we go over the, the potential cost of changing the domicile.
To, to be clear, is the question sort of the state regulatory environment and any improvements that are being made to that or refinements? Is that?
Well, I, I also don't know to what degree the, the state controls what the offerings can be for a, a captive in their state. So, you know, we don't want to have a situation where we have to review this every other year, right? How do we limit it to every five years, for example? Or maybe the board just wants to suggest to future boards, do it every 10 years. But how do we, through Aon, I guess, get a judgment of where it stands? And and I know we have these columns of coverage, coverage, cost, regulatory convenience. And the, the information as enumerated on seven, page seven. But how do we judge how, how, what kind of trajectory it's on for the next five years? You know, could a state legislature choose to close down captive insurance within a three to five-year timeframe? Which is, it's just a totally made up hypothetical question, to be clear. But I want to make sure that to the degree that we make any decisions for the quick use moving forward, that we're able to do it knowing that we have eyes wide open and some best practices in mind. Yeah, I don't know, from Aon's viewpoint, how often does a parent do a reevaluation? Are we doing the?
The good question, because it seems, to me, it seems like we've been doing it a lot, even before I was involved.
That's true.
I, I mean, it feels like that, I don't know how often like a, you know, a, a for-profit company would really do this domicile review in the same.
So I know, there was the establishment, and then there was the 2022 review.
There was.
I've seen reference to something in 2018 as well. It, it just seemed like it was happening to me, I was like, just, I came in later in the process, right? Like, at least for the last, you know, the last year or two. It just seemed like this question had been asked a lot.
I think from my experience in the, in the private sector of Civic Corp, we reviewed all the time because it was what, what, what was your risk profile and what were you, you know, what were you? So you, you had to kind of review to look at your best.
So we need to, but it was not. We should expect it's on a two-year cycle, for example.
At least. I think that's, is that consistent with your experience?
Uh, it's, to my knowledge, not, has not been scheduled. The one that we did this year that we, when I told you we were starting the white burning session, that was just, uh, it, it was not something that was scheduled, it was something like, I think it's about time to do that again and look at it. So I don't think there's a.
It was a staff function, I know it was a staff function at Civic Corp. It was like, okay, what's happening here, what's the degree of shift and what we want to do? I'm just saying.
So we should consciously set up a BKM for the board to ask the question and engage with staff. Because if, if the way that, for example, risk is functioning here and, and Quick is going, that they're looking at the environment, I want to make sure that for future boards, whether it's us or different people in these seats, that they consciously know every two years, hey, ask this question. Should we be doing a reevaluate, should we be hearing about a reevaluation?
Based on the documentation, the history that we have, the 2022 domicile review was done at the request of a board member. And the 2025 review was done, not, not in a course, but.
Yeah.
As a review.
Yeah, we had board discussion. Yeah. Yeah, because we had questions when we formed as a new board, when was the last one? How are we doing, you know, the whole Cascadia earthquake thing and everything that CWS had advanced organizationally, so. Yeah.
You're a nice looking.
Yeah.
So we still have two more slides.
Yeah. Thank you, Lori. Yeah, we're very lucky, thank, uh, to have an expert in insurance. As you know, it's incredibly complicated.
Forever changing.
And forever changing, so.
That's what makes it interesting. Okay, so this last section. Give you some information on a customer assistance programs and then it's been offered.
Hang on, hang on.
Sorry, I was I'm missing a page.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So this section here, we're bringing you some information on customers' programs that are offered right now in the in our region. As you talked about, you know, the district going forward and looking at options for income assistance. So right now in our area, there are two types of assistance that are being provided. There's this emergency assistance program. That that is a one time a year, usually. That six dollar amount that's like funded by the cities to help individuals that have experienced an issue and are unable. Make them maybe missed a monthly payment from medical or some other type of movie that came up. Helps them pay that bill up to a certain dollar amount for in in a one year period.
So that's six of our seven cities.
So Beaverton, Hillsborough, Tiger, Twalons and Sherwood and Forest Grove offer some form of emergency.
Is the only one that doesn't do it, so I gotta go back to that of the list.
And they they usually contract with an outside party to evaluate the the need. Qualification for that assistance and then they fund with through those nonprofits, the money to apply against customers account. That's differences from what we call a low income subsidy or assistance program. Twelve Valley Water District is the only one in the region that provides that. That is a recognizing individual. It's not a one time emergency. It's an individual on a limited income. That needs this assistance to cover their utility bills on a continual basis. And then for twelve by water district, they did a great, they had a rate advisory group that got together. They decided they wanted to do this program. They structured their rates to provide this system and this coverage. So the individual would go through another a third party to get the approval. Or do they need the qualifications for that assistance program? And if they do, then twelve has set up in the billing system, the ability to adjust to go by twenty percent. On the by monthly bill to.
And is isn't it community action? Right, I was on the original design of that committing way back when.
When we did the ARPA stuff.
No, this was before I was a commissioner. Those two. Where would lie heat? For example, the you know, the electrical assistance, energy assistance, where do you think it fall between those two?
Definitely you you would apply and there'd be as funding as available, so kind of in the middle, I guess. You you could.
So this is really interesting to me because. There were some pretty vocal city councilors, particularly in Hillsborough about this. They made it sound like it was low income subsidy, not emergency assistance.
They may not understand their own program.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Do they call it emergency assistance?
Yes, we go to their website. There's definitely information on it.
Thank you.
And this particular topic was last presented to the board on October eleventh, twenty twenty three. It really came forward because over time, we've been approached by the cities continuously asking us to participate in the their assistance program. Really, because it's hard for them when an individual gets approval for this assistance and they apply it to their water. But yet we can't do anything for the customer on the sewer side.
But we can find out, how do they budget for it on an annual basis?
Yeah, they what I've seen, they have a line item related to it and pay the money to community action. There's a bucket of money there. It's available that year. If it's all spent, it's all spent. If it's not, it's not.
Yeah, so that's another thing I didn't understand.
And so in the past years, we have put some money down in non departmental. It was a number that hadn't in in obviously it was requiring board approval to move it up. But it was that idea to if if they wanted to go forward, the assistance program we put on the emergency side.
Well, and the other thing is. Back in October of twenty twenty three, I know I had concerns about the customer pool. And making sure that the. Cities weren't subsidizing the. Cities that do local service. Were not subsidizing the contract cities and the UUAs, so. Okay, I'm learning a lot more.
So, you know, moving forward from this discussion, we're going to be looking at send up a timeline to talk about. Review programs we could offer in the service territory and in our peer agencies. Analyze the technical feasibility. That kind of falls into that study in the roadmap you've asked us to put together and and costs associated with approaches and. Whether it be emergency systems or low income subsidy and then reporting those findings. Right now, we have a plan on another seventh board or session. So kind of that roadmap we got us to come forward with, it would be. Fit well into that.
Cool.
Okay, you're at well, you've got the work questions.
So just a question of do you want us, should we move forward with looking at the assistance program? I know you've asked definitely to look at the low income subs.
Why are you asking us now versus November seventh when we have more?
By that, I mean, and now we know you want it because you actually mentioned in the previous section that you you want us to come forward with the roadmaps. We definitely look at that. This was the question was put up as we worked through the presentation. But yeah, you you direct us, you want to see.
I think it's a both. To me, it's a both. They actually serve similar but somewhat different functions. And I think of. Long ago, I was involved in helping people for organizations that had financial challenges and I. The reason I raise that experience is there are there are different kinds of like some people have a problem that just happened, like they just got fired. And they might have a job in a month. That means one kind of assistance, someone that is working at a very low wage job and doesn't really have a different career trajectory. Has a different problem. Those are both problems and they both need help, but they're not the same kind of help. So to me, it's a both.
I'm not ready to make the decision if I want one either or both. Rather, I want information on. I'm just trying to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't think my comment was we're we we need this program today, but.
And I want to know how much money each provides and what do we do about the fact that Cornelius doesn't have it?
I know they were looking at it.
Yeah.
Recently.
And we can look back to see if it's been added. It was not on their website like all the other cities.
Well, I think it's one of those. For lack of a better term, pay to play. If they don't have anything on the drinking water side. We shouldn't offer anything on the sewer side.
I think that as one option. I also again brought up why he can, you know. That may be the type of balance between two streams as well. That's a federal program, but. Nonetheless, it's administered on clean. It's been effective for a long time.
Yeah, we definitely provide some information on that.
And and we've been, I appreciate you raising that because we've been actively advocating at both federal level and state level. For, you know, either state dollars or federal dollars to provide this kind of assistance as well. That existed during COVID and has since dried up.
I'm sure it will be expanded at the federal level very rapidly.
So far, we haven't moved a needle.
Greece is rubbing off on me.
So so we will be back before you and and just to. We won't have precise costs. We will in the in the parlance of my predecessor, have some public policy math to give a rough sense. Just as far as expectations and resources that it will take to begin to map these things out.
Find out from city budgets what they have. Cool.
So.
Oh. I don't know. If we'll be going over communications anymore and I meant to share this earlier. I really was totally impressed by the virtual tour of the water treatment process. That is on our public website and also mentioned in pipeline. It's wicked cool. Thank you. You're pumping out good information. The lab stuff. If I didn't see it mentioned in pipeline and on and or social media. Those pieces under news and stories, I just wouldn't, they wouldn't pop out at me. So thank you for having the. The cross fertilization of different different channels.
Yeah, we're very excited about that lab Q and A that just published this week and sort of a teaser for the conversation we're having this afternoon. So. With that. We are at our lunch break.
Great, so we'll reconvene at twelve o'clock pronto. Thank you. Thank you. So we're all systems go back from our lunch break. And according to the agenda. If I turn to the right page. We're going to talk about the West Basin Master Plan. Pick your way team. And I dug out my East Basin Master Plan two. Cause that was my first basin master plan. Was that our first basin plan? Cool.
Okay, well, good afternoon, directors. My name is Josh Johnson. I'm the principal engineer and project manager for the West Basin Master Plan. Presenting with me today is going to be Jeff Hart, our interim capital planning division manager. And of course, Charlie, our acting CEO and GM.
Were any of you involved with the East Basin Master Plan?
East Basin Plan is before my time. I was a I was a consultant at that point, so.
Yep, I was involved for sure. Yep. So before being this new position, I was the principal engineer for pump station. So. I'd, you know, doing a lot of the pump station planning over there on the East Base.
And I was, yep, I was involved. In many master plans, I was involved in one in two thousand eight when I worked for a consulting firm. So that's part of how I got to know clean water.
So just looking at the cover, East Basin lists two consultant firms we did. West Basin so far does not. Or do we have them listed elsewhere? And I have not internalized that in the executive summary page.
I think they I think they didn't make the didn't make the cover on the summary.
So the slides we have right here.
So we'll start with just a quick introduction and talk about our basis of planning. Jeff will present the planning outcomes for conveyance. I'll talk about planning outcomes for treatment. And then we'll we'll go through the recommended C I D. So just a kind of summary of previous discussions back in twenty twenty three, the board charged C W A with reviewing and providing. Providing input on the West Basin Master Plan. We met with C W A four times over the course of the last two years. We also had a number of meetings with the C W A Subcommittee that was charged specifically with input on the plan. So at the June C W A meeting, C W A unanimously unanimously, excuse me, unanimously voted to. To recommend approval of the master plan. So we're here for our work session today. And in a board meeting in September, will the final plan will be done, what we asked for adoption.
I would say kudos to Jeff and and many folks. We did a better job with C W A of engaging them. The last time it was kind of, well, here's the plan and you know, here's a summary. And so we were much more strategic, I think, in meeting with them and having a focus subcommittee. They helped us and 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 Josh have been into it. Revised some of the non economic criteria that reflected their interests. So I I want to commend the team for doing that and. Shannon and the C E C folks were really helpful in Joe's group and setting us up for success with the WAC this time around.
So overview of the West Basin. West Basin has around four hundred ten thousand people. That's projected to grow to five hundred twenty thousand by twenty forty. Will refer to population projections a few times throughout a few times throughout the presentation here. So. Our population projections come from the Portland State University Democratic Research Center. That that group does population projections used by many agencies throughout the state. We also work with Metro on population projections, which are co implementers to get information on where where they see growth happening. West Basin itself is around seventy six square miles with a little over a thousand miles of sewer mains. Sixty one miles of interceptors and thugs. There are twenty eight pump stations and other sixty one miles of course means.
We also have. Numbers are just, sorry, I I can't resist myself, just stunning numbers. Because this is what I as a customer take it for granted. Every single day. And every time I flush the toilet or turn on the sink or put in a load of laundry, it's just stunning.
We have three water resource recovery facilities, Rock Creek where we are right now, Forest Grove and Hillsborough. The numbers you see up there are the rated capacities for those facilities. Average average flow treated is significantly lower than that. Those three facilities work together, so all of our solids are pumped here to Rock Creek for treatment. Hillsborough does not operate in the summer, so during the summer flows that go to Hillsborough are pumped to Forest Grove for treatment. And during the winter, the peak flows from those two smaller plants can be sent here to Rock Creek to help manage our overall. So that's why we do a basin plan and not just a, you know, a rock creek plan, because everything really needs to kind of work in. So here's our service area. The West Basin is in green and the kind of agenta line is the the district boundary. There's a few areas outside the district boundary that we do serve through inter local agreements and then some areas where. That are not part of the West Basin that are part of the district where. Growth may occur and those will eventually eventually become part of the space. So why do a master plan? So the master plan is really a roadmap to upgrade, expand our treatment conveyance infrastructure. The way to look at this figure is kind of from the bottom up. So we start with. Growth projections, what we can we can calculate on regarding future flows, basin characteristics. From that, we determine which projects we're going to need and we're going to need them. And we evaluate alternatives for those projects and then those selected all selected alternatives are how we build out our C I P. So goals and challenges for the plan. So our our number one or probably. You know, the reason we planned is we want capacity to serve growth industry. So to understand that, we need to know where growth is going to occur and when it's going to occur and how much. We also want to plan for an uncertain regulatory environment. You know, we kind of forecast where regulations are likely to be over the next few years, but. Looking out into the future, that kind of gets more and more uncertain. And I guess I should mention here that our. Our planning horizon for the plan is twenty years. So we do a detailed plan out to twenty forty five. But we do also look at build out, which is when there's no more growth happening within the district. So. We want to kind of look at both those cases to make sure we're preserving the flexibility that we need in case something changes over the between now. We want to plan to address the aging condition of our infrastructure and then finally want to build in resilience for seismic events.
So can I? Just interrupt to share a thought. With with you, Rick. I. And this may be worthy of some board discussion. Given the uncertainty of our structures here in the US. It would be interesting just to go through the thought exercise. Whiteboard exercise. Of what happens if? The. Federal government entirely defunds the EPA. I guess the, we have a watershed permit. And what happens if the federal government says, we don't want to be responsible for this anymore? And therefore the D U Q administers it. And I happen to like living in Oregon because I think as a state, we have a fundamental value of clean air and clean water. Places to recreate things, you know, and taking care of nature and wildlife. But what happens if our state goes through tremendous, uh, challenge to economically, such that some of this stuff is at risk? So one scenario I've had in mind of, we can proactively choose to continue to be the premier organization we are. That would be good. And, and how do we stay the course and not go backwards? The other extreme is, hey, it's the Wild West. I'm not advocating for the Wild West. Let me just be clear. But I don't know what that might mean from the standpoint of insurance risk or anything like that. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm just a planner, uh, by nature. And I look out into the future and we'll know more later this year. And that's why I feel much more comfortable that we're going to be engaging in October and November. Right? We'll have a few more months of experience, uh, you know. Should we expect this uncertainty to last a full four-year term or, or not?
Okay.
So, uh, it's just a thought.
Yeah.
And I wanted my colleagues to, to hear that. Thus far, it's not setting a direction from the board. But we may, it, there may come a time where we're going to have to start scoping out what that might mean. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Always about trying to capture all the potential scenarios. Um, so yeah, we haven't, of, for, we haven't contemplated some of that, but it is something to start to wrap your brain.
I'm not usually a, a skeptical person, right? Or a pessimist. So it's kind of interesting to have that thought. Thank you.
Um, so going back to growth and where we expect growth to occur, this is another view of the, of the West Basin. The, the colored areas show, uh, which facility flow goes through. So large purple area, uh, all those to Rock Creek. The green area goes to Forest Grove and the yellow areas go to the Hillsborough facility. Um, the hatched areas are, uh, areas where growth is expected to occur within the planning horizon. So you see some areas in, uh, within the huge.
Land use grow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Population growth will happen all over the place. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Uh, there is, you know, infill within the areas we already serve that it's part of. It's part of the projected population as well, as well as employment industry. So we mentioned in the first slide, the, uh, the projected growth, uh, in, in the West Basin over the next 20 years. So that's what's shown on the, uh, on the left there. On the right are, uh, low projections for, for those facility. So our, our flow projections derived from the population projections and, uh, what we know about comes, what comes into our plans now. Um, I guess one thing to take away from those graphs on the right is it's, it's not necessarily evenly distributed over the three plants. So some plants may see, uh, a bigger percentage change than others. And then some of that is also driven by, uh, employment growth in industry. Particularly if you look at the, uh, bottom top.
Excuse me. I don't have the east, I don't have the east basin land here. Do we have the same growth projections for East Basin approximately or is West Basin a higher growth area in relationship to, uh, dislocation?
Well, it's also bigger.
I don't, and Josh maybe, I don't remember that my, my intuition of being percentage wise more growth west basin.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Just looking at going from 400,000 to 510 or something like that, which is 110 right there, which is.
Yeah, it's, it's a front bit.
More industrial growth in the West Basin versus East?
Yes, not as much as we were.
Yeah. East Basin has, uh, the, um, River Terrace area, a bit of Cooper Mountain area in Beaverton, the King City, uh, expansion area, the Sherwood expansion area. So.
And those primarily are residential.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Joe makes a good, just, we don't specifically, it's hard. There's a little blurb about the industrial growth, but we do spend a lot of time on the industrial growth component. We had lots of meetings with city of Hillsborough, as well as the major industries that contribute flow and developed several scenarios for industrial growth. Kind of a high, medium, low, that was, and, and then which one to plan around, lots of discussion there. So our plan is not, uh, it, it pretty, you might ask, well, with all we're reading about even today, the plan can certainly, it anticipated a limited scenario, um, as well. And so we're, we're pretty, it's very adaptable to those, to those pieces. It's also very adaptable if, you know, things were to grow as originally hoped and envisioned.
It's just like the five-year C I P goes through annual review.
Yeah.
Of the five-year plan.
Yep. And what it says in the East Basin plan is, uh, the Durham service area population is projected to increase by 36% during the 20-year planning period at an annual growth rate of 1.8% according to P S U Population Research Center.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we looked at flow projections, uh, on the, the previous slide. So, um, like I mentioned, these are developed based on the planning, the population projection as well as our specific load monitoring information. Part of this is that we build climate resiliency into those planning flows. Uh, when we look at our wet weather flows. One of the early action items on this plan was a, a design storm evaluation. So, um, our design storm is, is kind of a hypothetical storm, um, that we use in our, in our, uh, blow models to, uh, project the flows coming to the plan. We looked at, uh, kind of the historical change in, in storms that we've seen and kind of projected out where, where we expect that to be in the next 20 years. The net increase in our design storm, I think, is around 10%. So that's kind of how we, we think climate resiliency into, uh, in the. We also do loading projections. Um, so, uh, loading is just the total amount per day of a substance that needs to be treated at one of our facilities. Some treatment processes are driven by flow instead of things. So we really need to look. Trying to figure out when to, uh, when to use that process. Um, and again, those are built up from the blow projections and, uh, historical. For those recovery facilities.
Just since we mentioned East Basin, we have gone back and revisited the timing of East Basin projects based upon the updated design storm work. So we applied that to the C I P.
So we also looked at, um, potentially re, potential regulatory issues, um, in particular, uh, aluminum limits, phosphorus limits, um, total suspended solid limits. And then current and polyfluoroalkyl substances or K F A S, uh, these are forever chemicals that probably hear about. And we also, uh, assess seismic resiliency. So, um, our, our, and the strategy there is to build resiliency into new projects. Uh, it's very difficult to go back and retrofit something that's already constructed or already in the ground to be resilient to the, the Cascadia subduction quake. But we can build that to new facilities, kind of grow our, um, you know, grow our resilience over time that way. There are some opportunities for pipelines where they're above ground at bridges or creek crossings. And then we, we developed a, essentially a phased approach, uh, to restore treatment. So, uh, you know, immediately following a quake, uh, you know, we expect power not to be available. Our only goal at that point is essentially to control bypass and disinfective, protect human health. Uh, you know, over the next, uh, six months, we kind of phase in additional processes. As resources are available, power becomes available with the goal at six months being able to.
Looking ahead to future boards, what is the right phraseology you use for the big old pipe that's under pressure? It's a force main.
Force main.
Yes.
Yeah.
I flunked the top. It might be interesting or helpful to have a, you know, we have a network that has this many miles of pipeline, just like you did earlier in the introduction. And in the case of a normal six-point, whatever, a three-ish, a six-ish and a Cascadian nine-ish. This is, this is what the behavior might be like for the force main or the interceptors and trunks for the sewer mains.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Just a, a brief overview.
Yep, that would be good.
And then of course the treatment plants with the amazing array of technology and.
I will say, if you're, if you're worried about the next earthquake, this is not the plant. This would not be the plant you want to be having your board work session day at if the earthquake were to come. This one's, uh, the ground is not good here, liquefaction and, and all kinds of stuff. Durham on the other, it's, it's great ground over there. So.
I've had the great idea going to Durham.
Yeah.
The good instincts.
Where Hillsborough does not, is not premier.
Sorry.
Not the city yet.
Yeah.
It's not sure where the dam's going to flow. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're glad that we are just starting on a force main condition assessment project. So we're going to take a look at all 50 or so of our force mains and. Yeah. If you want to add the recycled water pipes into it, yeah, there's 40 pump stations. And then you want to add twin 24s, you add in our recycled water pipes, we're up to 50 plus different force mains. Yeah.
Oh.
So we have a lot of pressurized pipe out there.
Yep.
I did.
Topography, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one of the key things we'll be quantifying is that seismic resiliency of our, our force mains are in the ground right now.
Thank you.
Just a couple more points on the, by way of introduction. Um, so this, this plan's meant to be, or all our plans are meant to be living plans. So rather than just kind of being a snapshot in time that we do once and, and, uh, you know, kind of follow, follow without thinking about it. We do go back in, uh, like Rick was alluding to, uh, kind of update this periodically by, by looking at, uh, how are low projections and low projections compared to what we're actually seeing?
Is that on the set cycle, like every couple of years or, or is it? Looking for an outside influence to say reactionary, that's the phrase.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, I mean, it's really more of a, um, kind of as we go basis, you know, if we're coming up on a project that's, uh, you know, expected to be due based on the plan, we'll start looking at the.
We do it every year at C I P time.
Okay.
So to get a big, so to get the big picture.
Yep.
But, and you're, that is correct. Once we get to the actual project, there's also a much, a very deep dive into the specific flows. And so these are, they're planning costs, but they're also planning flows. And what you find is when you're actually going in, Jeff, dealing with pump stations deals with it a lot. What are the actual flows going to be? You need to go to the next level. So there's a specific component as Joss mentions, but it's important to look at it every year. And then yes, if there's an, there are sometimes a step function, maybe one way, maybe, maybe the other, up or down, um, with respect to industries that would cause you to look at it.
So I'm going to ask a curious question, but I frankly don't really need to know this, but I'm hoping you certifiably smart people do look into this. You know, I've certainly learned being an elected official and paying more attention to what's happening on the ground in my community that some pipes that have been in the ground, right? We've heard about force growth 80, 80 years oldish. And we've discovered that some pipes aren't where those old engineering plants that they would be. Do you have a feel? I'm hoping. And let me state it as a declarative statement versus a question. I am hoping organizationally that you have a feel for what percentage of our overall pipe and pumps that we have pretty good confidence that it's where we think it is versus hopefully, you know, less than 50%, it's a crap sheet.
I mean, I think, Jeff, you can chime in. I feel pretty confident with our infrastructure, um, our G R I S system. And you know, how we've leveraged technology to get good information. There's always hidden surprises every time you do some type of underground work.
A lot of our system is not 100 or 150 years old, like some of those others, right?
Yeah.
A lot of it's newer.
A lot of ours, I mean, the, yeah, the bigger stuff is new. We're, we're generally in the, yeah, 50.
You're right. Cause USA only 55 years old.
Right.
Peace. Yeah. We have some inherited system and if Ryan Sandu were here, I'm sure he'd talk about the work that his team does, that when they find something that's a little different, they make sure and record that so that we are updating, um, in our systems. Yeah.
You know, it seems like I've been watching fiber be installed for over 25 years. Right? The ditch digger machine or whatever they call it that pushes in and lays in. I assume it seems like there are corridors where they're doing it again and again and again. So in my brain, it's like, okay, that stuff's just pushing other stuff out of the way. Does, do our pipes get influenced by other pipes trying to push it away versus just cut and cover?
I don't think this, it's the diameter isn't such that it would cause that piece. Yeah.
Okay.
I, but we do with our force mains, we, we put in, uh, locating so you can find it. And then also with what Ryan has to do with cleaning and all the, like, he has to know where, that, that kind of also helps that we have that ongoing program to know where. When things are located.
Well, I will say the, and asking that question now, because three years ago, um, there was probably about four force mains where we just had those old drawings like you're talking about. So the last three years we've gone in with our field ops crews, dug down, found them and put, uh, as Rick was saying, locating, uh, we call, we're using kind of newer technology, locating balls down there. So we can measure where exactly they are with our little wand. So. So.
There's reason for that stuff, but it's, as you've looked. Great. Thank you.
So part, part of the living plan approach is a, uh, what we call a just-in-time capacity approach. Essentially, this just means that we want to implement projects ahead of development so that we can reliably serve residents, businesses and industries. So we're continually assessing growth and timing, uh, through modeling and monitoring. With the idea that we want to, we want to have this in time to serve growth, but not so far ahead that we're, we're over investing and either, uh, putting something in that, uh, where the growth pattern ends up changing or, you know, just kind of stranding an asset that, that we don't need. Then our, our first step in this was, um, kind of a multi-day, multi-disciplinary workshop where we got treatment, conveyance and regulatory folks all in the same room together. The goal here is really to, um, kind of decide how much, what areas need to go to which, which facilities. And that just helps us kind of narrow the universe of alternatives we need to look at. So, um, the takeaways from that were that we want to continue maximizing moves of Rock Creek. We did decide that it was a benefit to divert banks of West Forest Grove to, uh, the Forest Grove facility. Right now those areas go to Hillsborough. Rock Creek does have capacity through, uh, through build out under our most likely regulatory scenario. But we do want to save some space at Forest Grove, uh, in case regulations change and need to build out some offices there.
Now, I think I might've heard you incorrectly earlier that Rock Creek handles the solids processing.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct. Yeah.
Forest Grove and Hillsborough don't do solids?
Correct. Yeah. Those are, uh, we have what we call the twin 24s, which are, um, kind of the backbone, uh, um, kind of the backbone, uh, a backbone of force mains that connects the three plants. So, so we collect the solids at those two smaller facilities, pump those to Rock Creek and then heavy the, all the solids get treated.
You've told us that before, right, got it, okay, thank you.
One thing on the camp, um, there were no s'mores involved in the camp. But it is, I want to point it out because it's, it's a process that's worked well, it's a little different than many people do, we actually kind of bring the team in and you're on a lockdown almost for a week. Um, and the idea is you get everybody in the room, we had all, all the stakeholders in the room together. And, and then they might go away and get their own homework assignments. Until you get together Monday, they go away, you have to bring this information back, okay, we're gonna meet on Wednesday. And so uh, by the end of that week, we had looked at many, many scenarios. Um, you have folks just cranking out cost numbers to help you make decisions. So we'd never done it for planning, we've done it for designs where you've got structural, electrical and uh, it, it was a, it was a great process to get everybody bought in and, and um, and to make good decisions that you didn't feel like you had to go back and rethink later.
So we didn't do that on space.
We did not do that on the east space, uh, yeah.
So I'm stupid, feeling stupid. I'm feeling stupid because it's a multi-day workshop. But camp is service marked here, is camp a software, is that an act?
It's a, it's, well, and Coro, the consultant did get their name on this, so. Like I said, that's where I, we used to do that at Corolo uh, when I was there and, and it was trademarked way back, what service mark way back. It's concentrated, accelerated, motivated, problem solving. Yeah, I can remember that, but that many.
Cause when I'm doing planning, I wouldn't want to be motivated, accelerated or concentrated. She says tongue in cheek. Okay, cool.
Um, so at that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, who's gonna talk about uh, outcomes for conveyance.
So as we were just talking about uh, with the camp discussion, uh, there's a lot of different alternatives that we were looking at. Don't try to, how to solve the conveyance uh, issues within the west basin, whether that's uh, capacity issues or new developments or just, as we're talking earlier about, just old pipes that are seeing deterioration, need to be, that need to be replaced. Um, so how, when you take a look at kind of all those concerns, um, how do you determine what uh, alternative we should move forward with? So what we did, some of it was done in camp, a lot of it was done after camp, because it was more detailed, was if you look at the left, that bubble chart, we looked at three different things. We looked at uh, the capital costs, so the costs upfront in order to construct and design permit, what we're talking about. Um, lifecycle costs, so operation and maintenance costs associated with it, renewal replacement, if any equipment needs to be replaced. And then the non-cost factor, so those factors were, as Josh was talking about earlier, uh, what was discussed with C W A C. Um, they could be safety, they could be regulatory, how it affects the public, so quite a few different things went into non-cost factors. And when with three of those things um, quantified, um, a bunch of different graphs and figures over on the right, where I can go into detail, but those are, those were developed to help us come up with uh, the decision of which alternate to move forward with. So um, I will say on, on the bottom uh, graphs here, you can see the non uh, cost factors graded against the capital cost. So what we're looking for and the alternatives we move forward with are um, high uh, rankings for non-cost factors with low costs. Yeah, it seems pretty simple on that front. All right. Okay, so this is where I might have to stand up, because it's hard to see, so I got a mic here. Stand up with what this is saying.
Yes.
Yeah. You can move both before there, yeah.
And I invite my colleagues, maybe your eyesight's better than mine.
All right, so, so what this is showing is the overall conveyance uh, outcomes, the plans, what we're, we're planning on doing. So each of these labels right here show all, in, in white, show all the different projects we're doing. Um, let's take a look at the, kind of the solid bold lines here. The easiest one to see is probably this one right here, that's purple and red, so those colors indicate capacity constraints. So um, the darker the color, the more capacity constrained they are. So that, this long trunk right here is the Beaverton trunk. And we have identified four different phases uh, to upgrade that Beaverton trunk. Um, some other things to notice is the color coding. Um, we have the yellow and the red and the orange, so those three colors indicate uh, basins or areas that have high INI. Uh, inflow and infiltration where the groundwater comes up, can get into the pipe or uh, water can get in with, into the pipes, other, with other means that aren't necessarily sewage. Uh, red are the areas of concern, uh, those are the areas we want to really tackle from an INI standpoint. Uh, the.
And there will be a lot of, like, there's a, there will be a lot of flow because there's not good INI?
So there will, so in the red areas, that's where we're uh, monitoring or uh, measuring high INI. So that means there's a lot of extra water getting into the pipe.
Getting into the system.
Getting in, yeah. Exactly, so you can see a lot, Forest Grove, um, Forest Grove is a pretty targeted area to, uh, not only because of the old pipes, um, but just a lot of uh, groundwater or stormwater, or I shouldn't say stormer, but rainwater, kind of get it into the system there. That we're trying to identify, then over here too, in the kind of lower Beaverton area. The last thing to notice here, it was in some earlier slides that Josh was showing, is these other shades of green, uh, kind of purple up there, those are um, just areas of growth uh, that we're seeing. So any questions on this map? Yeah, so we will be getting in the next slide, going to uh, kind of a list of what those projects are. All right, so we'll start with the Hillsborough, Forest Grove basins. Um, here are the primary projects that came out of here, I'm not gonna list every single one, but in general, as you can see, there's INI projects listed there. There's the Council Creek Pump Station, so that's for the diversion pump station that Josh was talking about, where we're uh, uh, take flows from Forest Grove and West, or Banks and West Forest Grove and get them to the Forest Grove Treatment Plant, rather than have them go to Hillsborough. Um, some various other pump upgrade or pump station uh, upgrades, uh, new pump stations and gravity trunk up there. Yep, the same thing, a bigger list with Rock Creek, because it's a bigger basin. Um, you're seeing the same things, you're seeing INI projects, you're seeing trunk upgrades, new trunks, pump stations.
Does, does North, where does North Plains material go?
North Plains goes to Rock Creek. Taking back, I'll show you, let's see. Okay, so North Plains is up here.
Yeah.
And it's gray, because that means this is the force vein right here, that gray. So it's gray, that means there's no, no capacity issues, because there's no problems with that force vein. Goes down and um, it discharges into the system here in North Hillsborough, then it goes down to the treatment plant there, yeah, Rock Creek.
Cool, thank you.
So we got a couple more kind of figures here to show what this looks like from an implementation standpoint and dollar standpoint. Um, so over the next uh, twenty years, there's over fifty capacity improvement projects. It's six hundred fifty million, a lot of money's gonna be sunk into just uh, new infrastructure or upsizing existing infrastructure that doesn't have the capacity. Um, as I was talking about INI projects, uh, we find all those red areas, orange areas that we want to target to improve, two hundred sixty million. And the one thing that hasn't been touched on yet is renewal replacement, so that is four pipelines that are showing signs of deterioration, that are old, that need to be replaced um, before they actually start getting that INI, so that's a hundred sixty-eight million. Okay, so down below is, like I said, the implementation, I'm gonna start at the very bottom where we have INI and the renewal replacement, so that's continuous. Um, we continue to see, or we'll just be working on that year after year. And then you can see kind of the major projects above, um, how that's proven out. And there's a little bit more detail on the next slide of pelvises.
So you all have knocked my socks off.
Well.
For the next essentials?
Mm hmm.
Given them both of these, and I live in Beaverton, I live in North Beaverton. And if you had asked me before this started, which basin I was in, I would have put money on east.
Yep.
No.
Yep.
I'm in weather and um, this helps me appreciate these and this slide and the similar one for east makes me, not just as a board member, but in our conversations with our city electives, appreciate the level of planning that you've been doing that goes into our CIP and all those rates, Kathy, that you've been bringing to us, so wow. Well, and I want that same line, I'd just like Rick and Kathy to talk a moment. And I know we're on, we're really on the west basin, but I think the time for me comes in to where we're looking at our reserves, all the discussions we've had around the budget to the thing and how that relates to planning to these big numbers on here, because I, there's a lot of anxiety there about having such a high reserve, but when I look at those numbers, you know, they're higher than the base are.
Essentially, this should be tying to SDCs, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I understand the other components, but I, I just think it's tight, you might want to take a moment and like a little bit about how, you gave us a pie chart that had our sources of revenue. Amazing how it all comes together.
And so that's gonna be a blend of um, SDC rate revenue and bond funding. So you know, you map out based on the east basin and the updated west basin in our CIP and flow the numbers through and plan out, what do we need in rates, what do we need in bond?
So you have somebody or your team works with all these basin planning teams?
Oh, yeah.
Integrated.
In the CIP, yes. And on operations too.
Thank you.
Rick, I have a question.
Yeah.
This hasn't been adopted yet, but in the CIP we just wrapped up, were these numbers incorporated? Or are we gonna see a big change in next year's CIP because the board has adopted this plan?
I believe most of the, it, within the, the nearer term, the numbers got into the CIP. So the further out numbers um, were probably squishier, you know, at that time, but we really tried to push.
On twenty thirty-one.
Yeah, tried to push to use the planning work here to get it as much as possible, like in our near terms. I will also, C W A C was very interested in the SDC part and how it's.
Sure they were.
Translate and we committed to doing sort of an, an SDC one oh one and can, and know lots of, lots, lots of good communication work ahead of us on that, on that.
And in addition to C W S essentials, which is a great.
Yeah.
Suggestion, when we go to the cities in the west basin, this is gonna be part of the presentation, good.
Well, Beaverton's in both basins.
They're in both.
Yeah. I don't have a feel for how many other cities are, makes it.
Most, I think just Beaverton. Maybe uninformed. Yeah, Mayor Beatty said that on Monday, she's always special.
How the east and west basin relate to one another is important for our cities to understand, because that's our whole picture. So as we look at our costs, when we look at our rates and all those things, you know, it can't be just about the city that's in what basin. I tell you, this is one of the coolest jobs, selected jobs on the planet.
I want to do a time check, I think we can.
I need to zip it.
No, you're, I'm gentle voice of time here.
Jerry's meeting with you.
I'm just laughing.
All right, so I'll move on to this, so it's very similar to the slide before, but it just shows every single, I don't say every single, but a lot more projects. And what this shows, we have, as we go from left to right, is still just time from where we are right now, twenty twenty five. Um, out, out to, I should put my glasses on again, but was it twenty fifty five?
Yep.
Um. Maybe I don't need my glasses anymore. But what you can see though is how we kind of align the projects to where, um, you know, we're pretty front-loaded. Uh, but as we go along in time, there's different stair steps there. So from both a funding standpoint and a resourcing standpoint, you know, we have this planned out to where it's balanced as we go through time.
They're on system-wide reduction. So it's all the way across.
Yeah, so that's, so yeah, right, those INI projects, so those are, just continuous, yep.
Where is our weakest link in the whole system?
It's a good question.
Do we have multiple sidebar, another time, Catherine?
We have looked at.
Don't, don't spend time there, no. We have too many slides, we have too many slides.
Just one, uh, maybe one, one note on the INI, I don't think it made the cut for the uh, for the slide deck here, but we did go through kind of an optimization exercise, looking at different thresholds for INI. Um, and the cost of taking that out versus the cost of conveying it, treating it and kind of find this, you know, the idea is you find the sweet spot there where you're, you're not paying too much to take it out, you're not paying too much to, to convey and treat it. So I think that is in the handout, uh, yeah, though it's not the slideshow here. Um, so our treatment planning process um, kind of followed a similar path to uh, conveyance, where we start with our projections. Um, our, our core tool here, um, your computer simula, simulations of our facilities. Uh, we use that to uh, kind of look forward in time with our flow and load projections and kind of find when our, our processes are gonna be out of capacity. Um, and then the, the outcomes of that are uh, CIP on the treatment side um, as well as site plans for, for each of the facilities, we'll go through those.
Well, and this speaks to the caliber of C W S to me as well, because for other utilities or smaller utilities, they just hire consultants by the black box components. Whereas you all have the capacity in-house to do this work and to maintain this and reanalyze it, you know. It's, it's just amazing, thank you.
Um, so in the um, you know, in the full detailed plan, one thing you'll see over and over are trigger plots. And this is kind of a core tool for looking at treatment capacity. Um, so the, the red line is the capacity that our, our plant currently has. Um, the blue line is how that's projected to increase over time, or the need for capacity will increase over time. Um, so the solid blue line there um, was the projection done for the master plan and then the dashlines are uh, previous planning effort. So the takeaway from this is where the blue and red lines cross, that's uh, the point in time where we need to have additional capacity um, brought online. Um, the, the dots over on the left are actual historical data. Um, so you can see for uh, for uh, this, which is our Rock Creek primary clarifiers. Um, that's, that real data has trended down over time, uh, probably due to some industrial changes. So if that continued, um, our next projection might, might be a little bit lower and will push uh, uh, push the need for capacity out. So that's how these trigger plots are used to kind of continuously update, uh, you know, update our planning efforts and, you know, a, a look at.
This is just one process, you've probably got ten or twenty of these for?
Uh, at, at least, yeah, we go through, essentially, we go through every process for every facility.
And each process may have four of its own.
Yeah, okay.
Different, some different times of the year and different.
Right, so this is just an example.
It's exactly, yeah.
And we have the same thing for pump stations, um, and what we're trying to do as well is try to get a, a capture of um, building permits, water meters, just things even before we could even see the flows, just whatever, whatever indications we can get to help better plan and forecast what's happening.
Um, so for Rock Creek, um, we identified just under four hundred million dollars in projects through twenty forty-five. Um, with our major projects being uh, tertiary filter expansion, grit removal, secondary expansion, digester improvements. Um, there's a, if we're not, I don't know if we have time to go through uh, what each process does. I think there is a handout uh, for Rock Creek that's kind of broadly applicable to the other facilities. That explains what each process is and the, the handout has a description. That explains what each process is and the, the handout has a description of each of these.
I do think we've been educated on this before.
Okay.
Generally, like the different processes.
And, and for folks, uh, that handout is the very last tab, Rock Creek Clarifier. We had intended to do a tour and we are going to be too short on time, but that's. That's Josh's thing.
Um, so looking at our timeline, we have filtration, grit removal, secondary expansion and digestion, um, all within the next 10 years. Um, and then the second phase is, uh, two of those projects as well as, uh, this, uh. A number of other projects out before build out. Um, so we go through a site planning exercise for each facility. The idea here is to look at what we need within the planning horizon. As well as what we need, uh, by build out. The idea is that we don't box ourselves in by. By putting something where we're going to need space in the future. So, um, the orange, the orange figures are, uh. Uh, projects within the next 20 years. Um, the yellow are projects that we expect to meet before build out. Um, so you can see, uh, you know, secondary expansion, which is, uh. Which is over here on the right, kind of adding those units, uh, in succession. Um, Forest Grove and Hillsborough, uh, there were around $117 million through 2045. Um, with major projects for Forest Grove operation, uh, Forest Grove secondary expansion and the Hillsborough headworks.
Was, was that a picture of?
Oh, uh, this is, uh, our Forest Grove primary clarifiers, which, uh, are under construction as we speak. Yep.
Can you go back one slide? The output of the clean, of the plant, the clean water. Where does it drain into a tributary?
Uh, so our. We have, so yeah, our outfall, um. Our, kind of our, our disinfection over here and, uh, there's a reuse pump station over here. So that's.
Yeah, but where's their last stream?
Oh. Uh, roughly.
Geographically. Got it. Thank you.
Um.
Which concrete company? Wants to deliver the massive amount of concrete that.
This was a competitive bid, uh, Cal Portland happened, actually happened to win this.
Wow. Cause that, there's a lot.
It's really cool.
There's, there's a lot more to come. Yeah. This is, uh, yeah, they're actually pouring concrete out there today. Um, so for Forest Grove and Hillsborough, again, we develop a timeline, um, of our, of our major projects. Um, so Hillsborough, there's, there's really not much expansion in happening, uh, in the next 20 years. There are some. Uh, we do need, um, some rehab at the headworks. Um, and then future projects for disinfection and, uh, the high head pump station. Um, you will see hatching here. That's for a new headworks. Um, this is a decision point we didn't quite. Get through in the plan. Um, the current headworks, um, definitely needs some rehab. Um, we would probably need a bigger footprint to get it fully up to, uh, where we'd like it to be. Uh, so that's a. That's a decision that's, that's to be made still. Um, and here's our, here's our site plan for Forest Grove. And again, um, the. Uh, up there at the, the north end, um, so that's space for a future solids facility. So if we had a regulation change and we couldn't expand the. The, the facility here at Rock Creek enough to have to treat solids to the point where we needed to treat them. We do have space at, at Forest Grove to potentially add a facility there.
And that would be a regulatory hurdle coming from which levels of. Government?
Um, yeah, presumably EPA or possibly a state regulation depending. So this was, um. Yeah, I think we were thinking specifically with PFAS in mind for this.
Okay.
PFAS tends to find its way into solids and there's no. You know, there is no technology for that right now, um, but if that regulation happened and if there was the, the right technology. Um, this is one, one potential place we could put reach facility.
Fortunately, our monitoring and data of the biosol, our numbers are, are quite low. So we're, but still this is a. Definite what if scenario that we've.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three minutes.
All right. It's the, it's the time here. Um, so our, our overall CIP or on the conveyance side, um, looks like this with between 40 and $60 million per year, um, fairly consistently. Um, the, the treatment side is a little bit spikier, um, as we, you know, we have some big projects, but they don't happen. As often, uh, but then when you put everything, uh, together, this is, this is what it looks like with around 1.5 billion with the B. Uh, for the West Basin over the last 20 years.
Questions, board members?
Pretty thorough.
Okay, I have a request. Could you bring the Rock Creek slide backup? And board members, could we get a big pic, uh, get a picture in front of that slide? Uh, slides up there.
We can, we can come back to this at the end of the day too.
Yep.
So slide 65 in the master deck.
Okay.
Make a note of that.
Perfect.
You got it.
Well. Directors, I think we want to give these folks a big. Ovation. Uh, this, could you remind me, Elizabeth, when is, or Rick, when is this coming to us?
We are looking at dates in September.
September.
To the board.
Okay. So terrific. September, here we come.
And these are reserved slides, please.
You know, that's a bummer. Jerry's going to be, is it the first half of September?
It's, it's, we're going to be until October.
Uh, I think we're shooting for end of September or so.
Bummer, he'll be away. And this is a big part of District Four. I know it's got District Three in it too, but, um, and District Two, but. Yeah, but. Sorry.
Three plants.
So, yeah.
Waiting a few weeks for when it comes back. Is that? Big deal?
I don't know. We'll leave that as a thought exercise for staff. How's that? Grab you because we're talking about the difference between Sept-. September 16th or 23rd and October 7th. So, yeah. Not, not something we can really assess today. Cool. So buildings.
Josh, definitely. Yeah.
Thank you very much for your expertise and your time today.
Thank you.
The clicker.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, the, the Karens are on their way. Who?
Karen.
Karen.
Karen Chichetu and Karen Bill.
Not the people that want to complain. Yeah.
I am now. My husband keeps telling me ignorance of your culture, Catherine, is not considered cool. I'm like, I'm the most uncool person on the planet. So. Now I know.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
All right, dive in. Um. I'm going to fill in for Perry Sunderland who's starting a cruise today and a lot. So he's.
Vacation.
He knows the details on Central, but I'll cover, I'll cover his, and Karen's. Going to help me also with what's going on with the lab, which is obviously a huge part of Ripple. So, um, given overview of the, uh, Ripple project construction, um, it is as, these are pictures of construction. So we're clearly getting some things done. Out there, uh, an update on where we're at with Central. As well as our Springer project, which we haven't talked about as much. Um, so Karen. Bill will, will give you a good information on where we're at with that project and timing and so forth. Go from there. So pretty rendering of Ripple.
So these pictures.
Yeah.
Are which part of that? Building.
They will be the.
The bottom part here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you got it.
Thanks.
That new addition that you were pointing out on is, is what they're working on right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Karen Chichetu is covering the Y Ripple.
Yeah, you're the Y Ripple. Do you, I can bring you the clicker.
That looks like a top secret, secret agent man case there in the upper right-hand corner.
All right. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Karen Chichetu and I am the Water Quality Lab Manager. So I'm going to talk about, um, Y Ripple today. Um, as you, most of you would know, um. Our lab building at ABC is quite old, but in the 30 years that we've had that building, it has served the district very well. Um, but, um, what's happening now is the age of our lab is becoming evident every day. And, uh, the top two pictures there, um. Yeah, uh, seeing and reacting to, due to the age of, uh, our lab.
Karen, can, I'm sorry to interrupt here. Um. Director Willie is going to have to step away. So I'd like to, uh, go back to and take the photo now. And then we'll pick back up here because, well, just because we need to.
Unless you all want to chip in on my water bill. It's the sprinkler system's been running since seven o'clock this morning.
Oh, no. Uh-oh.
As long as.
All systems, all over the house, all over the yard. So.
I'm going to need a loan from the city of Hillsborough.
Yeah.
We want to be seated. Cause I, I don't think this is predictable. So I'm not going to.
No, I was going to offer the seat.
Jody and I are both going to take photos and we're going to have a competition.
Jody, would you like us to sit in chairs or lock out some of like this? We'll stand like this. He's standing over by. Or that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully none of your sprinkler heads burst. That's when we get really a bit of a hassle.
But when they're all going, it's about the same thing.
All, all at the same time.
All the sprinklers are on.
Are you coming back here for the four o'clock?
Uh, I'll, I'll check that, but, uh, we'll, I'll, I'll probably come back here because it's easier for me to come here than you come in town. So.
Jerry did, Jerry.
Thank you.
So Karen, when you were just starting on Ripple, um. One of the grounding things for me is this lab processes like. Thousands, thousands of samples and that's as granular as I can make it. Do you have any, can you give me a, a scope? Is it like a thousand a year? Is it?
Um, 2025, fiscal year 2025 numbers is 76,000 for the year.
That's a lot.
Thousands. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for the context.
All right.
Ooh, smokes.
So what we're seeing really happening at, um, our lab is, um. Failures of critical systems, which includes our hoods. Some of the hoods have very visible corroded ductwork. And, um, that's a safety issue. Um, they've, you know, we're constantly experiencing HVAC issues and. One of those issues, um, led to the picture on the top right of the soaked computers. Uh, those are actually very expensive $3,000 computers, um, which was a result of a water leak that happened after hours. Um, so we're like constantly, uh, reacting and responding to something breaking, um, very regularly. Um, and also, um, in terms of just the workload, um, we're seeing an increasing demand on, um, analytical work. Of, uh, required of the lab, um, driven mostly by, um, new regulations. But also driven by the research that we need to do to prepare for those regulations. And so. The current, um, square footage that we have, um, is really at its max. And we're seeing overcrowding in some spaces. One of those again is, you know, the top right picture there, um. It's a simple, um, electrical cord taped to a wall over a cup sink. It's not an ideal situation, but, um. It was necessitated by the fact that that was the only space available to put. A piece of equipment and the only power outlet. Um, left in the room. And so, um, apart from, you know, the, the increased workloads. Uh, spaces sharing, uh, that, that's happening and putting work together that really shouldn't be in the same room. There are security issues that we also need to consider and improve on. Uh, we need better, um, security for our sample drop off. Uh, we need the lab to be, you know, more in a bubble, um, so that we can really be confident that. When we take custody of our samples, they are not, um. Available to unauthorized people. And that's a little bit difficult to do at, uh, the ABC location.
Okay, boss. This is where, as a board member, I need a little management. I hear this and my brain explodes. It's like, I don't want people unsafe. I don't, yeah, it. Are you asking about the exposures? No, no. Um, this is where I had a hard time last fall. And again, earlier this year, hearing that the lab doesn't move until the end of 26. It's like.
The speed.
To be, this is, this is deplorable. And I'm like, wait a minute, we bought Ripple feels like long ago.
Mm-hmm.
Now, but part of that is COVID time. I'm very anxious. I'm very anxious. Are things on time? Is there stuff we need to consider so we can get it faster? Or are the long lead times because of all the construction that's going on and the hop stadium gets. All the. Capacity, uh, or the equipment that we need. To purchase for the lab is the long lead. I'm just, this is, this is one of the areas when I think about CWS that I'm. Let out anxious about.
Yeah.
And I'm not an anxious person.
I'm sure Karen's anxious as well. Um, we all are. I, we are, I will, we have, um.
You don't have to solve this today, but know that I feel like.
Yeah.
As the acting GM, I could, I could use a little.
Yeah. Well, we'll show some pictures of construct. So the good news is we're under construction. It's a very healthy side. I mean, there's probably 30 people out there. Working on it. So we're. We're spending money in a good way. We're, means we're getting things done. So, you know, we're probably 20% through the project. We're through this. What we call the submittal phase, which is getting equipment in. So I'm not aware, I don't think we have, um. Any equipment, supply chain issues. Um, things can happen in construction, um. But we're moving fast. We're in construction and we know full speed ahead.
And we have some slides later in the presentation to walk through that too.
Yeah.
Well, this is what I'm most anxious.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you for hearing me out.
I'll, yeah, if we hit something that's unexpected, we will inform the board, but for now, and when you see this schedule. You know, that, that's based upon good information. A, a contractor that's motivated to get in and get it done.
These could, you heard me saying.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I'm going to switch. Um, so I'm going to switch and talk about the financial side and the cost of um, the work that the lab does. Um, so our annual lab budget is five million dollars. And when you compare that with the cost of potentially taking all the work that we do to an external lab, you have to factor in the premiums that are added by the external contracting lab in order to meet some of the daily um, same day turnaround times that are needed by our or uh, plant operators to make, you know, those daily decisions and adjustments to their processes. And so when you factor in that, the total cost of taking samples externally um, runs up to like six point seven million. And that estimate does not include um, other costs like um, the daily sampling that is done by the lab staff, um, the monitoring and sampling of storms, the emergency sampling, responding to sewage overflows in the districts and other spills in the district. And also some uh, shipping costs uh, associated with sending samples to, to services, service labs that are not local. And so when you consider all that, the cost really runs um, above seven million annually. And so there's that benefit also of just keeping the work um, in-house. But uh, the biggest thing I think for me of um, the Ripple Lab is the fact that it's going to bring together the water quality lab and the research team. The two teams work together um, often, uh, particularly when, you know, we're uh, trying to make things more efficient, uh, more modern methods and uh, new methods uh, preparing for uh, new regulations. And so having um, the teams in separate district facilities is not very efficient. And um, on the next slide, um, this is just a flow plan of the Ripple Lab. And um, in yellow there, that, that's all the spaces that will be um, occupied by the regulatory lab on day one. And then we also have some spaces uh, within there for the research group. That's the molecular lab in gray, uh, the flex lab in brown and uh, the purple uh, trace organics uh, lab. But we've also um, in the planning of this lab, which there was a lot of stuff involvement, uh, included some space for growth in the flex uh, or future labs that are in blue. And.
And we updated these colors and it's available online. Okay.
When uh, when we had COVID, um, I remember Diane and Mark talking with me about flow analysis, not of the sample, but the people movement. Right, because we were worried, we didn't know enough in the early days. So have you been able to evaluate this? Go through the thought exercise of turning the clock back and saying, okay, if we had a similar, you know, hazardous, organic, mysterious thing, have we isolated enough? So you've limited that exposure.
In Ripple?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Grateful for all the smart finding words.
Okay, um, so this um, having our groups all in one building re- really reduces some of the duplicated efforts that are currently happening and uh, break down some of the, the silos that have uh, been built over the years having um, our groups operating from uh, different facilities. Um, but in summary, I think I would say that uh, the Ripple Lab is going to offer us space for growth. It's going to offer us, you know, a modern facility that has the utilities and space um, spare footage that we need to really meet the requirements that are being asked of the regulatory lab.
I would say the innovation part of this is, is all regulatory related though. There's the, the seventy-two thousand, you know, the vast majority is compliance and things we have to do today. But a lot of the other work that's lab related is about future compliance and permitting and um, making sure that we have the best framework regulatory wise for meeting especially thermal limits. And that's a lot of what's happening here with, with testing laboratory works. So these are uh, just a little eye candy fun photo that construction for focus, as was asked previously. It's that north addition um, that's happening uh, that houses a medical equipment. The mechanical component of this project is pretty staggering. It's like twenty to twenty-five million dollars for them.
Their movement, heating, cooling.
And in a lab, it all has to be outside. There's, it's, yeah, the lab, the complexity of having a lab space makes it.
It really looks or feels a little more like a medical space than a.
Yeah, a hundred percent, yeah. So they're, they're on uh, they're on track with the schedule. They're ahead of the schedule that was originally put into the bid documents, which is good. Um, puddings are going in, all the under slab utilities are going in, electrical service feeds um, from Forest Grow Power and Light are coming in. We have redundant feed here to provide some additional power redundancy uh, and lab utilities. So that's the main focus at this point in time. I do want to add value engineering doesn't stop. Um, we do changes in construction. Yes, a lot of them are additive cost changes, but we're always looking through the submittal process. And as we get into things and the contractors bring us ideas of ways to also save on money. So Karen's done a great job of making sure we're buying lab equipment that is critical and essential for what we need today. And we've built space and flex space in for the future needs. So we've got it, a good handle on that. And I think where we're going to land is less than what we had budgeted for in lab equipment. Um, similar with the furniture package, we're reviewing the furniture package. Where we're going to land will be less than what we were planning to spend on furniture originally. And then just this week, um, we, Elizabeth and I were in a meeting um, with Karen Debate, another Karen, Karen Debate, who was here, talking about the branding um, and, and storytelling. So what's it gonna look like in the space? And, and we're also had a budget that we're now trending to be under, but we're looking to phase both lab equipment if we needed to and the wayfinding. So we can make sure we're right sizing the expense. Some of the stuff that's pretty cool is like this stuff you see on the glass here is not expensive. It's just something they come in. So we're using a lot of the same techniques that we used in this building out at Ripple to give you a, a great feel of the science that's there. Um, the water protection messaging will be strong.
Yeah, that's great.
We're a pretty, it's a pretty fun part of the project to, to look at the branding.
On the furniture?
Yeah.
Just because, I mean, there is some focus or discussion around if, how judicious your organization is with money.
Yes.
What, uh, maybe you can speak to uh, why the furniture, like, do we need less furniture? Are we buying less high quality furniture? Or are we buying more economical, like, what, what is the, what is making the difference on something like that? Because that is certainly something that, you know, you can make decisions about that.
Yeah. Good question. Well, we won't sacrifice on what I would call the working furniture, the desks, the chairs. You need good stuff that lasts. Um, the architects, some of the things like you might see in one of these pictures. So, so we, we will revisit either, do we want to phase some furniture? But also, did we get, do some things look a little too, are they a little fancier than what we need? So you can buy.
Are we at the law firm in the lobby?
Yes, right. And, you know, we can look at rights to make sure certain areas you, that are very more open to the public. You know, making sure it sends a certain message, but then being more utilitarian in, in other spaces.
Thank you.
Yep.
What's the difference between the top picture and the bottom picture?
Just a different, it's the same room, it's in the lobby, it's just a different perspective, basically.
Yeah, thanks.
So the update, um, the total project cost, which was previously presented in the bud, it, it is sixty-five million. So that's all in with all of your engineering, your architectural fees, your furniture, you know, lap, everything is in that budget. The construction contract itself is around fifty-five million dollars. And schedule wise, substantial completion in September of twenty twenty-six. So a little over a year away. Um, move-in date and final completion, we're looking at, at January. There's a lot of equipment here to commission, to get started, to get testing, to get validated. So it'll be a major effort. Um, and we already have somebody strictly focused on logistics of getting everything moved in from the lab we have to the new facility. Uh, it's gonna be a, a little bit of a wild ride, but we're feeling like we're way ahead of it, so we'll be as prepared as we can be.
Is there gonna be a period of time where you're operating both labs briefly?
Look at that, March twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh.
Go ahead, did Jeff question?
January.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I see. It was up there in the middle, build. Got it.
Okay, yeah.
That's where I see our march. Got it. Yep.
So we're, we're in the north building addition. Um, we're not on the interior build part. Mechanical pieces are, are coming. The BIM modeling is, is basically will be a three D model that will serve as an ASB build of once this whole project is done. So nerding out a little bit myself, this, this is pretty great stuff. How things have changed from, you know, regular CAD drawings to actually having three D models that incorporate everything.
What's BIM, you know?
Um, building integration management.
You're a tool kid.
Yeah.
Nerd.
Yeah, no, it's self-proclaimed. So that's base, if there's, I don't know if you have any other questions on the schedule.
How can we do a fast burn? A bit anxious.
Yeah.
I mean, you're worried about the people working in a current environment.
Yeah.
That's what.
Yep, it's all about.
I, I guess, Rick, to that point and Karen, maybe this is more for you. Is there significant risk to staff right now?
Um, I think that it's more inconveniences. Um, the safety issues that I'm talking about, um, we work very closely with our safety team when we face with challenging situations to make sure that, you know, we're still keep, keeping people safe. So for the hoods that um, have visible corrosion, for example, um, rather than testing them only annually, which is like the OSHA requirement, we're doing that twice a year. And then if for any reason there's like an alarm that doesn't make sense, we can also test the hoods ourselves. We have tools to do that, uh, so we can actually do that more frequently. Um, and then hoods that we are not sure that they're actually functioning well, we've just like decommissioned and are not using those. So we're, we're, we're doing.
So you're being proactive about.
Yes.
It's not ideal, but you're being proactive and doing what you can. And Rick, you're comfortable with?
I'm comfortable, yes. I mean, I.
Not ideal, but you can live with it.
We can live with, I applaud Karen's team, their patience and flexibility. They were amazing and also in this design and giving us fantastic input. So we're gonna deliver a very well-needed and deserved project for them. I don't know about moving faster. I will talk to the construction team. But, but it can't be over and we do partnering with our contractors, which is good. The best thing we can do is think about the what-ifs, what might throw us off. So it's hard to move quicker. You can only do potentially so much at this point in time. But being proactive about, and the contractor is the best to say, the things that could delay us trying to forecast those and get on top of them, so.
I just worry about, it only takes one accident to impact somebody's life, right? They work with
Yeah.
concentrated chemicals and all that stuff, so that's, that's where my worry comes from. That's what, okay, but I know there's light at the end of the.
Yeah.
Are there, just so I understand the, like, I mean, I've been in and worked in some labs. Is, are the hoods for protecting against the reagents that are being used? Or protecting against the biological things that are being tested or, or both, or what in? Okay, the hoods are for both.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, go ahead, need this, the Ripple information, this is all posted on our website.
On the whole presentation, yes.
Well, I, I, I'm looking more, I'm thinking about some of the, the press coming out there. That's what, that's one reason. This question, here we are in discussion, this is all good, we're all supportive. This is very good information. I just want to make sure that um, it is, that, that it is on the website where it's easily accessible, not just in a presentation.
And Director Tries, one of the things that we can do, this week we put out a um, great story about the lab and the need for the future lab. We can actually separately pull out this presentation and post it there as a cross-reference, if that's helpful.
I think that's a good idea. And I'm just.
To follow up, my plan is to, my next newsletter, send the
Yep.
brand new written um, background piece. I can include this PowerPoint with that to city officials.
OPB has a new Washington County focus for the border. I talked to her yesterday, so.
I hope these are being include, or will be included in the, the going around to the city's status.
It's one they should know, and they may have heard misinformation and misunderstandings. This is.
So we're.
They need to understand what goes into the overall system.
Yep, absolutely. So we're halfway through our time and what's going? About halfway through this slide.
Well, the other, and before I jump, just to finish the thought. So the lab is obviously the central, most important key, but there are lots of other issues with the existing ABC building that we didn't get into that were also multimillion.
Speed in there for ten minutes.
Yes.
Building rep and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a presentation.
From way back, yeah.
Oh, I don't know, last couple of years.
Yeah, we know, uh, April sixth, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Let me cover that.
We're not going back.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna jump over to central. We're doing tenant improvements. Um, love the space. A lot of folks are, not, I don't know what you call a lot of folks. There's a fair number of groups that are in central. Kathy has moved her team there. Uh, the conveyance engineering group is there. Jeff's capital planning group is there, he was here earlier. So, yes.
Commissioner Director Tries has her weekly office hours. Mine are now established and I start doing them when I get back August fourth. How about the other three? Do we know if they're set up yet?
I have not scheduled them yet, but I, I will.
I think that might have, we agreed to that while you were on vacation.
Yes.
Okay, great.
I'm happy to coordinate with you and if you had to get the.
Yeah.
Right now.
Why a slice is to hide too?
Can you remind me of central, is this the facility that we bought recently?
Was the old.
Okay, so when we say tenant improvements, are we just talking about, do we have other tenants in there?
No, no, it's the tenant improvement is a label for the inside.
I understand that part. I just think it's an odd use of the term when, but that's what we're really talking about, doing internal build out.
Internal.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
We are not really a tenant there.
No, it's kind of an architect thing.
I get that, that's fine.
Yeah.
So it's honor.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand what our
Yeah.
ownership relationship is.
Yeah, it is ours. So we're at, I, well, we've moved a little bit beyond the thirty percent schematic design phase. Um, the construction cost estimate that we received at approximately thirty percent um, was about six point seven million dollars. We've been, we are targeting a construction cost of about five point three million dollars. And so I'll get into some of the VE ideas that we have implemented since we've gotten the original number of six point six, seven, and we'll see how close we are to the five point three. Um, we'll certainly be in communication with the board as, at every phase of where we're at with the numbers and making decisions on, do we need to do any project phasing? If we elect to do so, to defer project cost, um, and weighing that against, what are we losing out on if we do the phasing? How painful will it be to live in, live through the next phase if we, if we were to go that route? But we'll provide you some options and flexibility.
We've got to cut out a ABC.
But let's also not make Pennywise sound foolish. But let's also not make Pennywise town foolish decisions on not doing something that we know will have to be done in two years and cost more.
Absolutely, thank you.
So that. I'll hold my question.
Yep, okay. Um, a long list of items, I don't know that I need to go through all of them. But there was plans at one point or discussion about putting in a second elevator. There is no need to have that elevator for code. Those of us that have lived in the building don't feel that we are missing out in having an elevator. The one we have is very convenient, so, and that is actually a pretty easy thing to add later on down the road. Um, and it's pretty significant dollars, so we we would propose to not have that elevator in place. We had a pretty expansive, large locker room upgrade and improvement. We revisited the needs of that, and so we've scaled that back quite a bit. We simplified the plan for public meeting space on the second floor. I'll show that to you when we get to the plan view of the second floor. It's also kind of its own isolated area, so it's pretty easy to go back to and do it a later day without a whole lot of disruption. The HVAC system looks, it's, it's it's older, but it's robust enough that the mechanical engineers feel like we're good to go. We've, we've reduced some, I would call, have called them aspirational lobby modifications to what we feel is pretty smart and pragmatic. Acoustical improvements are key, but we're not, we're targeting the areas that it needs to be done. Talked about mechanical plumbing, and we're trying to use as much of the existing furniture as absolutely possible. I know we're also talking to some other folks that are looking to unload some very nice furniture. Those are the main value engineering things we're working on today.
My challenge is wayfinding.
Okay. Within the building or?
I don't, yeah, I don't know it very well yet, so I should probably take these slides with me when I go there. Somebody has to escort me around. Here's this conference room and here's this conference.
As a short person, I feel like I'm navigating a little bit of a maze, because the cubicles are tall.
Tall.
Yeah.
You don't have to flip over a bit.
No.
Part of it is, I, uh, there isn't a day goes by when I'm at PSB where either outside or inside, people are asking me, where do I go for this? And it's just part of my job duties as, as.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever that phrase is, as needed.
Duties as assigned.
Yes.
So I'll quickly go through the, these are very high level. Yeah, the best way to get a feel for what's happening is when you're in the building. Um, I'm happy to walk through it and kind of show the spaces and what's planned.
Like a scavenger.
Yeah. We actually did a scavenger hunt in this building as a team builder. It's, it's big and that was pretty.
Speaking from experience, Catherine, it's really kind of fun to walk around and you see people in their desk. And you know where, where they are and you get to say hello, so it's, I appreciate it.
I better wear my badge or they'll wonder who is this crazy lady.
So on the, on the first floor, we've got the legal department in green. There's the ability to have that as a lock space if we so desire for, for that kind of security purpose. That's something Caroline was interested in. We've got a space for the CEO slash GM. You know, a couple executive office spaces in there and certainly space for Ann, some, uh, some meeting space as well. We're not planning to move the walls where I'm sitting right now in the office that we're planning. It's, you know, very, uh, fine-sized, we're not going crazy here with anything at that level.
With candy.
Yeah.
Do we hotel space all over the place, or where do I park my butt?
So there's, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, currently, because the configuration right now will move a little bit. We do have hotel space on the first floor where the regulatory affairs are.
Okay.
Um, but there's space in the temporary chief of staff area on the second floor that has a hotel space that I reserve when Director Treese comes, but it's a little quiet over there. So depending on the kind of experience you want to have, we have some options.
Well, I don't want to be off by myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I mentioned, um, the value engineering and the public meetings. So that's the, basically what we're calling the flex office space in the yellow up on the second floor. And we're leaving that, um, as kind of a blank canvas piece. Otherwise, it will be chief of staff, all of the leadership team is embedded within their departments. It's not like we're gonna have the executive team off in one area. Everybody else, you know, doing, doing their own thing somewhere else. So community, uh, communications and community engagement, planning and development. Strategically here near the counter, so if there's permit things and other things, um, there's space off of the lobby for planning and development folks to go and meet with people that are coming in, um, to talk about those types of things.
Just as a refresher, it, folks enter on the second floor. This is where you kind of.
This is convenient.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
For the public.
Yeah.
For.
Right there is the lobby.
Yep. So that public space, um, is ver, is secured. We, I, we have identified a, I know a pathway for whomever is there at reception to be able to get away. You know, there, there, there is a barrier, but we're not putting the whole plate glass, we made a conscious decision that we, we don't feel like that's needed or maybe sends the message that we need. We can always add that type of thing later, but that's what we've gone with.
You didn't convey my sewer fast enough, but yeah.
And they have to get, but, well, they have to get busted into comment, but we feel like we've got a good handle on.
It's adequate.
It's, I think it's adequate, but could be increased down the road easily if we needed to. Okay, third floor is, um, human resources. Um, again, provisions to make sure folks entering that area. You know, they have the privacy that they need. We've got conveyance, capital planning, and NSCS all together, they work together a lot, so as you would expect, there's thoughtfulness behind where different groups are located, procurement and finance, um, also near each other. Business operations.
Is CEO culture, education, or engagement?
It's cultural equity and learning.
Equity.
Yeah.
And, and this was initially, um, mapped out when Jack Lanning was, and those were his direct and now that shifted a little bit.
Yeah, to be fair, that name will, will be different, I think. As we've kind of, you've seen some already, some changes in how we're taking advantage of the folks in that group. Just serve different roles.
If you go to the building today, finance is not on this floor, finance is my space.
On this.
Joe, it's in my space.
Wow.
The hours. And, and what space would that be, Joe?
Floor in the, where procurement is here, but on the second floor.
Oh, communications and community engagement.
And planning and develop.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, you're coming soon.
Yeah.
You're like, I thought this is where Joe's teams. All this finance folks are here.
Way finding Joe's teams over here.
It's probably just Ann and I, they're, they're in the spaces kind of where that will be. And Caroline, I think, will be when she's back, back at the same space where legal is planned to be, but we're all. Okay, yeah, so the, I know the slide you're all very interested in. This is the schedule. We are in design and the, the current schedule shows going to bid in December, which is a good time to bid from generally a bid climate and getting competitive pricing. Construction then starting in February in a move-in date right now of November twenty twenty-six.
And a specific date, November seventeenth.
Yeah. Day is the twenty-first. You will think it. Any other questions?
Springer? Oh, you mean on central?
On central.
Nope.
Okay.
Why are they looking to cut it down?
Maybe. I've heard maintenance probably.
All right, you ready? Hi, I'm Karen Bill, and I'm a engineering manager in the Truman Plant Services Division. And I've been managing the design project for the Springer facility project. Just to kind of set the stage, Clean Water Services has an existing material handling facility um, and warehouse located between Northeast Evergreen and the Hillsborough Airport. Um, and it's just south of the, the Hillsborough Public Works building area off of Evergreen. The material handling site basically sorts and treats debris and street, street sweepings and catch base and clean out material. And it is currently home to our field operations construction team. And this photo shows the temporary buildings and trailers that were constructed in February of twenty twenty-four. And right now we have about thirty staff that are, that use this facility. So there's a combination of a, an office area, trailer, a locker room, and some showers and restroom there. The Springer facility project is the construction of a new operations office, locker room, and covered fleet storage at the site. And so the, for both the field, um, construction operation crew and our pump station maintenance groups.
So is that a picture of an existing building or just an example of what it would look like from a?
So we have two, um, properties at this location. One has the existing material handling sites and the, the temporary buildings. And then across the street is an existing warehouse that we use for, um, storage and other miscellaneous items. And then there's an undeveloped portion of the property just north of the building.
Got it.
Um, and so historically, our construction field operations team hasn't had a centralized location where both their office buildings, their locker rooms, their materials, and their vehicles are all housed. So there was a facility planning document developed once this property was located and purchased. That sort of set the plan for this new facility for this crew. And during that time, it also identified the pump station maintenance group as a similar user group that, you know, works on projects all across the district, um, and that could benefit from having, you know, all their vehicles and their office space all in one location.
I remember having a couple of one-on-ones in my regular one-on-ones with Diane Mark about Springer.
Yep. They were in trailers at Ripple at one time. And other trailers are out, yeah, in this area.
Yeah, before demolition started at, yeah, at Ripple. Um, so we're currently at about the sixty percent design, um, point. The, the rendering shows that same existing warehouse kind of, you know, spruced up. That's the big white building there in the center of the rendering. And then off to the right-hand side is the, the new building roof line. And then around the perimeter of the facility on the backside is the, um, covered fleet storage. I meant to give a, so Springer is on your left there with the airport kind of to the south, um, and to, to the left. And then our material handling yard is to the right of, um, this facility.
We've been learning a lot about the state of affairs at our Walnut Street Center and a lot of, uh, for Washington County and a lot of weaknesses there, so. It's reassuring to hear how far along this is and the analysis that went into it.
Um, so from thirty percent, um, we really wanted to take a hard look at, um, you know, right sizing the facility. And so we, we've taken some time to simplify the exterior of the building. You can tell the, the main entrance and roof line was brought down to simplify that and identify some value engineering aspects from the interior perspective. This shows like the main crew space for, you know, trainings and meetings. And a drop ceiling was added. There's a lot of open space for flexibility and collaboration. So those were kind of some eye candy to look at. Um, this, um, talks a little bit about the refined interior design that's happened between thirty and sixty percent. It shows the floor plan of the buildings, so the, the existing large warehouse is on the south side of the floor plan there and moving from bottom to top, then you have the main entrance with the, uh, lunchroom space. Then the large crew area with offices and, uh, crew workstations. And then the locker room and mudroom space up at the top of the page.
So I have, but might sound like a silly question. I'm really get, building towards it, but when you say the sixty-five crew, are those like field ops members?
Yes, so those are folks that are, you know, on the crews themselves, um, for both the field, uh, construction ops and the pump station teams. And that includes their leads too.
Okay.
Breakdown.
So two different classes of questions. And part of this, I remember going back to the heat dome summer. We also had a couple of heat, normal heat waves. So, uh, one of the things that I have come to appreciate, uh, having in the Washington County building is the ice machine. Do each of our field ops buildings have an ice machine?
We are planning to have an ice machine in the lunchroom. We've been working diligently with them to, you know, hear their preferences, um, of what they want. I failed to mention earlier that this is, this site has also been identified to be a field post for emergency response for construction-related activities. So, um, there are some key features, like having a stove has been an important ask from their group too. Because if they have to be there at off-hours, that they're able to, you know, cook meals.
Yep. And Karen, I'm gonna take privileges and go back to this first photo. That blue box there?
Yep.
That's ice.
Okay.
So it's not an ice machine, but they have to stock it to make sure that they have ice inside.
Yep.
Yeah.
With a price?
But the field ops building off of. Yes, thank you. Has locker rooms. Are there locker rooms here?
There are, they're at the top part of the, um, floor plan there. So there's a crew entrance that is like the crew main entrance is on the top side of the, um, the, the building there, um, since the main entrance for vehicles and parking lot is kind of behind the building. And, um, there's a mudroom and the uniform location where you grab your uniforms and then the locker room spaces.
I assume, because we had to go through this in COVID, there was, that's a lack of a better phrase, the flow control needed. So I assume you've tested that, because sometime in the next thirty-plus years, that may happen again. And then my other question is, uh, uh, gender neutral support.
Yeah, so we have, um, our traditional women's and men's locker room and then also, um, a couple, few extra individual spaces as well.
Thank you very much.
Don't let it, central to adding, making sure there's general.
Yeah, thank you. And is this, is this all through, is it MWA architects?
It is, yes, so we, uh, started the design with a strong work architecture, but they, um, have since joined forces with MWA, so they are now the prime.
I was just looking, this is on our, uh, consent agenda.
Yes, we have an amendment that's to the board, um, for approval on that. These are some renderings of the interior up in your. These are some renderings of the interior up in your, the top right there is the entrance. To the to the building. From the X, from the public perspective. Then if you walk through that door like that man in the picture, then you come to. The the view on your bottom left. Kind of into the crew space, the main sort of training space off to the left and individual crew spaces along the windows. There on the right. And then bottom right is a picture of the lunchroom. That also opens up to the crew space to allow for more flexible use.
We've gotten a lot of good input from staff. Karen Adam, and they're they want basic their.
Yeah.
They're they do their own value.
They want easy to clean, you know.
We don't fancy thing.
It's gonna break all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so lots of polished concrete.
Yeah. Oh, we have polished concrete.
And so this is also updated from your slides just to make it a little bit more. To have more information conveyed.
So this shows the entire site. So the existing. Material handling is out on the on the right there. And the temporary trailers on the south side of that site of the property. And then the new building is planned. Just north of the existing warehouse. Some of the next steps coming through sixty percent, we did submit to the city of Hillsborough for our land use review. So that is ongoing. And.
Tree canopy requirements.
Yeah, so that's a new requirement for the city of Hillsborough, looking at the parking lot specifically. So. It's brand new. I don't think it's in the code yet. So we're working to make sure we understand how that will apply. One one item that we're working with through Joe's group is a crosswalk between the two facilities. We've started to have that discussion with Hillsborough and. It, yeah, it's a little tricky since it's not specifically allowed, but we're working through with them to try to. Explain the circumstance.
We will have workers that need to get across.
We're not gonna get two. Let's try to get one.
We're not gonna get two.
Northeast Thirty Third doesn't have a lot of traffic. So it doesn't necessarily meet the requirements that trigger a march crosswalk.
I'm, I was thinking about it from the standpoint of the workers.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
As part of the sixty percent, we had an update to our cost estimate with our value engineering and, you know, getting further in design.
Look at that, the numbers went down.
Total, yeah, total construction cost went down about two million dollars. With the total project cost. So that's all the architecture and engineering fees around twenty three and a half.
Thank you.
Project schedule wise, we're looking to finish the design in early of twenty six. And then you'll see a big gap basically between our orange and gray there at the bottom for bidding and. Basically, looking at overall budget balancing with Ripple and Central that this. Allows for. Some. To to balance the budget basically and start the construction for this project in the middle of twenty seven. And we're anticipating a year and a half construction timeframe. So. Around twenty twenty, end of twenty eight, we're looking for moving.
And really appreciate, like Karen, being patient. Our field ops folks living in working in trailers, they're, they don't complain. They're. Just happy to see the project is moving forward and they're given a lot of opportunity to have input into the project, but. I want to just thank them for for that willingness to let this process fit into the overall CIP and. Help us to balance that.
Thank you, team. Definitely. Board, any questions? This looks really promising. Great work. Thank you. And I. I don't know if you have any closing comments on this, but. It's been very, very reassuring. I really appreciate this update. Right. I think there's thoughtful work that's gone into this.
Well, I think there's been public questions too, that I have not felt quite as equipped to answer. Now I feel more confident about. The timing and exactly what is. What is happening with the facilities.
The value of it. Yep. Absolutely. Cool. So. Here we have a break. For fifteen minutes, is it?
Precisely.
Yeah. Okay, so we will reconvene. When this clock says two fifteen. And we are back. And I just want to note that Director Nefisa Phi has. Is not feeling well. And so she departed at the beginning of our break at two PM. So we continue to have four directors here. And we're going to proceed with the board planning and discussion phase. So this part probably isn't as well planned out. Simply because my name is on it.
This document looks very Chair Harrington like, like you say.
I did my best.
People know how to leverage information. We have tools that seem to be working for us as a board. So why not? Take.
Expand.
Exactly. So Elizabeth, you want to take us through this great work that's been happening?
Absolutely, Chair Harrington. Thank you so much. So as noted, the September column is now October. Apologies for not including the dates. But it will be October tenth.
So July eighteen.
July eighteen.
October ten and November seven.
Seven. And we do not have dates set yet for the twenty twenty six.
That's so twenty twenty six.
But trying to look at. The horizon for these CWS days. Through the this board's time together, because we know that in twenty twenty seven, we'll have a very different makeup. And. One of the things that the chair has been. Really good about reminding staff about is there's some good work to be done with this board. Given the experience and background. And so part of that was an attempt to capture, all right, what are the themes? How do we want to build information over time? So you'll see that it's organized also by topic. So budget and finance, those are all budget and finance topics. Going from left to right. We also have permit. Continuing the discussion around trust and credibility and that may continue to evolve over time.
Wait, that's on permit for a second.
Yes.
We have, our permit was twenty twenty two. It's a six year, five year. Permit. So you're going to be up in twenty twenty seven. Do you have to do? There's some, there were some stages. Ooh, I flunked that memory test too.
So one of the things is to ground the board and we can move the date of this, but I put in November, a permit cycle update.
Oh, right.
In the process. What does it look like as we march toward the new permit? And so just to to kind of ground the board again on what are those pieces?
You did a great job with us when we joined in twenty nineteen and bringing us up to speed in terms of what you were aiming for and. What you're doing for this cycle, planning for the next cycle. So, yeah. Very good.
Yeah, I mentioned trust and credibility. Leadership. There's a narrow line at the bottom of the second page. This is something where we will need some more direction from the board and want to work closely with you all.
This is where we also, it says recruitment discussion, but are we also, I mean, that's, that's, we talked about the national recruitment and all that. But it's just where we talk about succession planning and maybe organizational design in that respect. That would be under workforce HR on the next page.
Okay.
I just want to have it represented.
Yeah.
February twenty sixth.
And and if there are pieces that you want to see sooner or later, or you want sketched in, part of this is, this is a. It's a space where we can actually actively work together.
Could we? In the October meeting under workforce slash HR? Could you just go over the latest org chart for us? You know, I know, gosh, it was in February. I know Holly talked about. The HR class and comp. And then. We had. CJ Baxter retire and. Thank you for your stepping up in the acting role, but that's put pressure on the engineering side of the organization. So. It'll it'll just help me with that grounding. That's all.
Sure.
And it, it may be redundant. My colleagues may be bored out of their brains because. You know, that half hour sync up is something they know, but.
Rick, on the, on the leadership, this leadership tat line. Are there other organizational leadership things besides the recruitment? That you would, I mean, that's a big topic to me and one that is important. Just I feel like it to make sure the organization is. Investing in the future of leadership. Is that, are there other discussions that you would want to have with the board on leadership?
One could be, well, we've, we've operated under the Sage umbrella for a while and it's a fairly small, it's in my mind, a small group. So. As far as leadership within Clean Water. Discussion about what, how that executive leadership team. Might be. Alternatives to look at that differently and expand that.
Would you want some board's input on that?
We're, that's one reason why we're having discussion today is it goes.
Why I'm asking, like, if you do want, then you should put it on. If not, then I, I don't know that we need to be involved in that discussion, but I just want to. Be open to topics on leadership that you want to talk about too.
What I prefer to do is recognize, just like we have board planning, review and discuss plan. We, I want to see leadership and board discussion. Okay. Because through the course of our board discussions, both in work session and executive session. Though we may not remember at this point, there were several topics that were. Discussed or potentially learning more. In a future timeframe and. I chose to not write all those down. So we need to sync back up. In the October meeting with some of ELT and maybe that's it. Maybe we need to make sure we just have some. Focus time with ELT and just an open conversation about for the board to say, well, what about this? What about this? How does this work? How does that work? Or I'd like, this is one reason why I wanted to have this talk type. You know, where are there parts of the business where the board feels like it needs to be in the know a little bit more about how things work? But one of the things that. I am. Coming to embrace more for both agencies. And my colleagues have heard this term with me a couple of times over the last couple of years, but. Trust but verify. You know, yes, we trust our direct reports. As a board, it's on us to verify. And. We may need to think about that. And these are our only meetings. For discussion as the CWS Board of Directors. So it's not necessarily all about you, so to speak. But all about what do we need to be doing? For board governance and doing the right thing. And I think we've been on a journey over the last year. To say, okay, well, you know, here's another example. And I'm apologizing that I feel, I feel like I'm standing on a soapbox right now, but. Commissioner Rogers was the board member, I mentioned this last year, who was. From the board most active with NACWA. I learned in reviewing records, there were some NACWA trips that he took. That we heard nothing about. And. You know, we, we really need to look at, how do we make sure, on one hand, we, we thought about WEF, we, we. Talked about WEF and NACWA as. As exposure opportunities for the board. You know, to learn more about the realm of how CWS operates. I think we also need to look at. What do we need to do to be an active board in those domains? There's a dip, there's a different level of expectation. I think. There's attending conferences and gaining knowledge. There's also being a leader in those, in those organizations. I think that's partly what you're talking about. No, no. Up for NACWA? No. The utility conference in the summer. Isn't just a, okay, how do I get more familiar with what CWS does and delivers to the industry? It's, that's a base level question. A different question is, okay, as an active board member for CWS. How do I? Attend that conference and look at what's happening in the industry and what I'm hearing from our staff. That's different. I'm not trying to say that we should have an active role as board members on. The the board of those associations, but rather. Right now, this year, none of us are going to a NACWA conference. And we haven't identified that we, that one of us might go to an IWA conference. We, I think we need. The discussion about board. Exposure in these different situations, but I'd also like to have a separate conversation about what are our expectations of. Rick and any other leadership positions within CWS about their role. In these organizations, because previously. Associations. Yeah. Previously, we were kind of told what was happening, not necessarily strategically developing the the concepts of. Where where would CWS be best positioned? Yep. For things like, and then reflecting on the, on. The strategies. Tanya's role at ICMA has, has really helped us when we look at recruitment issues, when we are understanding or even helping. With our city managers and other, other groups when they're recruiting. I don't want to back too far away from that type of relationship with associations at this. From the Clean Water Services perspective as well.
Yeah, it's an investment you make, but you also get things back out of it.
Exactly.
Um, I, I will just make a comment back on the budget and as I've been thinking through this more back on the budget and finance. One thing occurs to me that. When I'm looking at this and thinking about the process we went through. With the county entity and what I don't see here that I'd like to see is a little bit more thoughtful discussion about the strategic. Approach to the budget and planning the budget and what are like principles and. Sort of guiding principles and objectives are. I don't know that it needs to be quite as robust as what we did in with the county. But I do think that when I look at this, the first time there might be discussion about that might be, you know. Yeah, somewhere between February and May. And I think that's, I think that's too late. So just a comment that I think that should be happening in the September, October, November timeframe from your budgeting perspective. I don't know if others agree with that.
Well, I have a question. Similar but different.
Yeah.
So at the November learning day right now, we'll hear more about the year end financial report. When? When on the. County side, we get a five year financial forecast as we start our budget planning in. October as a board, and by December, we firm up our our principles and our priorities. That's part of identifying, okay, what? How bad is it this year? And it's going to continue to be bad. Um. But I'm recalling, there's also the the uh geo bond you're going after.
Uh, revenue bond.
Revenue bond.
Initially, December, we would look at.
What?
In December, we would look at an issuance.
Okay.
But as we look at project rollout in market.
And with that, are you still looking at refinancing what we had used with the Build America bonds?
Um, yeah, we will. We will. We'll see if that's favorable at that time, too. So it'd be nice to get out of work with that.
Okay, okay. Um, that's good. Okay. Just the state of affairs is is really helpful. So we're, it would be helpful. What I'm wondering about is, you know, we went through the three percent rate reduction. So I don't know, you had asked a fair question if the board's going to ask the agency. For a three percent, are we open to coming back in later conversations about the need for a five or or more percent? Will that do, what I'm going to wonder about is what? What fiscal year budget do you foresee that might be relative to?
Yeah, so we're hope, so our plan is November to provide an update to that cost of service study that that's the basis of our rate generation.
There it is. Yeah.
Yeah, that could be the basis of our rate generation during the time period, that time period, we're also asking, we're going to be, Joe's reaching out to the cities to get our E U E S U count information updated. And then we'll be going to do some rate development then that's listed there in February as a discussion point. So I mean, our hope is to um bring some of those rates into the next budget cycle. But it obviously requires then timing, communication to the cities, communication to the board. I think in that plan.
Um. I'm wondering. I do like the cadence of November to that early February. Um, I'm wondering, board, if rather than waiting for the proposed budget in May. I'm wondering about maybe, do we need to have a March? Work session. Um. Just, I don't know. Um, I think we need to be open to that. Um, the other thing, uh, I don't know how it fits in, but. I'm uncomfortable about the um. How we're going about the standalone C W S business meetings and do we have any one of these?
Oh, we don't, it didn't, uh, we had the discussion after this was produced, but um I did get a, an early draft of. Um.
Rules of procedure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What sort of timeframe? So for us having regular twice a month standalone C W S meetings. We're going to need as a board to have a work session review of a proposed final draft from staff. Of rules of procedure. We're going to need to review that and make sure it has what we want. And then we need to adopt it. Before we go to having the standalone C W S business meeting. Uh, and uh, you're looking at me funny.
I'm I'm processing, um, because this is, this is new, so I'm just listening to think about what I think about that. But anyway, go ahead.
I'm I'm apologize that, or I'm sorry that it sounds new to you, but.
Yeah, no, I just keep, I'm just catching up, I think, in this idea. So, yeah.
Um, just, we wanted to make sure that we had clarity for our customers around. Where does Washington County start and end and where does C W S start and end?
Okay, as hard as business of.
Yeah, we we've been great in terms of making sure as there's been a need. To have stand, what I call standalone ad hoc C W S meetings, who've been doing that.
Yes, okay.
But, you know, we've got to figure out this cadence of how do we actually formalize that? And uh, that agency with the number of contracts we have and all of that needs us to meet. Two times a month. And what I thought about is, well, logistically, you know. What does it mean to do that, right? You have to have a public comment period, whatnot, and rules of procedure for us is to be really smart.
Mm hmm.
Right? And having that little guide that the board clerk has in the room about how to test to buy and make money time and, you know, so it's. We're all being all very public about that. Um.
I think it's also, I I I believe that we, after going through the changes that we've gone through in the last few months. This is, this is an. The way that we are demonstrating to ourselves, giving ourselves the opportunity and to the public. That we are actively involved at Clean Water Services and that there is a vehicle for uh public comment directly to Clean Water Services, not through. The county. I'm very supportive of this. I think it's really important that we do this and I. I agree with Catherine that we need to have rules and procedures in place so that we can communicate. Why we're doing it and we hold ourselves accountable to what those rules and procedures are.
It also helps the public understand that we have a separate C W S Financial Audit Committee. It helps for clarity that the independently elected Washington County Program Auditor is specific to Washington County and does not cross over to C W S. So I'm just being clear. The other thing I want to mention, um, I, as one of five, have really internalized how. We've been going through this very intense focus uh effort of. Through the federal contracts and our role as a county government. What affect the new conditions that are coming in on the federal contracts and uh. And complying to current executive orders and then some of them have explicitly mentioned immigration as well, and there's variance there. Well, I went from, I'm just talking as one of five. I went from our public meeting on that June twelfth and what the. Legal implications might be, and I I reconfirmed it with Alex last night, so we'll be bringing it to our Tuesday meeting. But what I'm trying to catch my colleagues up on. Beyond what I may have said on Tuesday, and Jason, you're back, so you can hear it live, is. The Washington, us as the Washington County Board of Commissioners. We're going to have to go over our board focus list. And talking about needs and capacity at both our August fourteenth and our new September eleventh. Roundtables. You and I can each do September eleven.
Yeah, um, yes, I don't leave till the sixteenth.
Right, right. I think I leave the fifteenth or whatever. So um. So that's why we'll be able to catch up as the C W S. Board of Directors, being a little bit more mindful about our capacity.
Hmm.
And you're going to see some of this continue to play out in real time. Uh, through your attendance at our work sessions, for example, uh, because. Uh, we have access and opportunity this upcoming Tuesday. Um. Uh, leadership staff are realizing and it it. I anticipate it will come to the Board of Commissioners a little bit more uh with federal funding continuing. Um, and the the interplay with the state finances as well. Um, you know, we talked about it a little bit here with the B O R funding. Um. Um, so we're, we're going to have to assess that and on the Washington County side. Lost. The date, but we're going to be pursuing additional revenue opportunities. Um, and that's going to take a little bit more from us. So. Back to those two assets I mentioned this morning, our time and our political capital. We're going to be going to the max all the way through. For me, it's, I'll be running through that tape the end of. January fourth, twenty twenty seven. Um. And I know it's not unique to me. It's going to be us and our capacity is both boards and you've got. A really good set of board members who believe in both agencies and we want to do a good job. I'm not quite sure, though, how we define that. As a Board of Directors for C W S, which is another idea that's been rattling around in my head as a potential topic.
What are our board goals and expectations?
Yeah, redefinition too. You know, I, even though we, we, it's, I know I'm looking at this relatively. Than I did in the, in my first term, and and so, you know, I I've learned a lot. And I, and plus, you know, I feel like my, my personal knowledge about what we do, how we do it, has gotten up dramatically. So I want, I like what. I'm looking at the less basic. What about?
Yeah.
It's a premier agency. And we are very appreciative of the work that you do. How do we define that we are doing a good enough job for you?
I think that, to me, what we've been doing over the last couple of months and the hard decisions that we've made. That is evolving. I'm hoping that. The Clean Water Services Leadership Team and and employees appreciate. The additional attention and what we're trying to make good decisions and be uh more in- involved in it some. That from my standpoint, and like Pam said, we, we are paying more attention to Clean Water Services now and as an independent entity than we've ever done in the six years we've been on this thing, so.
But still trying to do it at that high enough level.
Yeah.
But I'd also add that I feel uh. I feel more needed. And I, it it's a, it's kind of an interesting thing, and it's not that I was respected and uh my time was protected. Previously, like, oh, I don't want to bother you with this kind of stuff, you know. Now I feel like there's more partnership and I feel like I'm more. Engaged in this. And so the the atmosphere has changed dramatic in.
I mean, what I observed when I sort of started attending everything after my election, but before I started. Is that this entity, at least from the, you know, and I was looking at it from the board perspective, because that's sort of my viewpoint. Was that this, this agency was like a train running on a track. And the board members were kind of occasionally jumping on, taking a little ride, answering a question, jumping back off, like it was, it was like moving, it was moving fast or moving at a. Reasonable clip and you were either on or off the train, but the train wasn't stopping for you. And you weren't really a key person in the train. At least that's, that's what I got out of my nine months of observation.
Well, I was completely.
I don't think that's, I don't feel like that's how it's been, actually, for me, the whole time I was on because of what has transpired.
Well, and a couple of things, though, have helped. We went from. Twenty nineteen, catch as catch can in terms of trying to make space for C W S work sessions to a cadence. In twenty three and twenty four of four times a year, where budget was one of the four, to looking at. Okay, what are we really trying to do and how do we make sure that we're present enough for that, which is not only. A few more work session days or half days, right? Um, but also board members having office hours at at. C W S Central or wherever. Um, and and the constituent reports and the uh improved websites and packets that are easy to find. You know, there are other uh. Capacities. Uh, tools in the toolbox now that we didn't have a year ago either.
Catherine, I'd also say that in two thousand nineteen, when we came on board, the three of us, that we were so focused on trying to break through. A lot of the curtains that were up at the county in terms of getting information, in terms of trying to understand what was going on. And that was the primary objective, not realizing, in my mind frankly, that there were similar curtains here. That um if we didn't have the, when we first came to the county, the lack of transparency. Was, I I don't know if you all know this, but when Catherine came in, the first thing she said was, not only are we going to post our agendas, but all the materials are going to be on on the agenda. Well. That had never happened before.
Or the culture was, we were asking questions and what we were hit with, why do you want to know?
Or what, tell me exactly what you want to know. Well, I don't know because I don't know it.
Because there's no information to even know.
Don't look behind this curtain. So I don't, but but my, my point here is that I don't, I think we, we were focused at the county as well. And um, C W S was the train and doing its thing, and so it it felt to me at least. My focus needed to be at the county, but when in fact, I probably should have been recognizing that the leadership had been the same. Through on both sides and most likely there was that you don't need to know as much anyway of the attitude.
Well, well, twenty nineteen, I had hour and a half one on ones with Diane once a week. Then went to twice a week because I couldn't maintain it to. Uh, twice, twice a month, thank you. And then I just couldn't keep doing both. So I was like, no, it's got to be once a month. And for a long time, it was an hour and a half and it's really been, um, for me, it's. What can I, what can I do? But it's one reason why, and I've mentioned uh previous in other meetings, the level of visibility that I had. Into uh challenges that the C E O was grappling with or that the agency was trying to sort through. We have. Had the opportunity to see since twenty nineteen, the work that you've been doing with performance excellence, and one of the reasons for that was. To identify all these processes that are necessary to be the agency that you are. And so just like on the county side, there's foundation building that's been happening. You've also done an amazing. Uh, set of work for foundation building. There's a reason why we have these building plans, right? It's not just how do we have the buildings for these wastewater recovery facilities? But how do we have the organization function? Similarly, having to assess the internal infrastructure. The H R systems, the finance systems, the procurement systems. We've been living that, breathing that with the E R P on the county side. With the new full first ever, as a. Full first ever, as it turns out, classing comfort, classing. Uh and the over twenty now up to twenty a hun- a thousand four hundred job classifications. And we also have had. Two new, two or three new union groups. Yes, three. The criminal justice side. Added to the number of them. So um you've been doing really great work. But it has all led us to, okay, how do we at an opportune time of saying, okay. Uh how are we doing as a board? How do we define those goals and objectives? And I'm also mindful since my tenure will be ending. The end of twenty six slash January fourth, twenty twenty seven. How do we document? What C W S board governance is? So that when you go through the new board, I'm a Tuckman's model fan. When you go through that new board formation, how do we, how do we ensure that? They're in a better place with us and so that they can then focus on what you need them to focus on in twenty seven, twenty eight. For example. And also, how can we as this existing board? That is a really good board. Thank you, sir, in joining us. Uh and really being so thoughtful and diligent. How can we look ahead for you and anticipate and help you build? The shared learning opportunity that not that new board should go. Because we've reaped the benefit of that in those shared learning opportunities. Through these learning days, through the attendance that we have and so forth. So. Yeah, I mean, just remember twenty nineteen, we did the design and construction standards? We had a tour on that. You know, just really good stuff. So.
That's a lot of our tours.
The other thing is, um, there is a member of your E L T who will be returning. A full-time General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer. And so I'm hoping in the October engagement that uh. That she'll be able to have had meetings with you so that you can help us better understand. What does that world look like?
And I can share, I was talking with uh Jeff Council. Earlier this week and I think. She was hoping to have a little bit more time, maybe in February, do the full scope on. But I I had that penciled pencil it on my own copy. It didn't make it into the.
Yeah, yeah. No, no worries. But I can tell you that uh as a member of the county commission. And remind me, there's another new topic I wanna pose here for discussion. Uh and I keep forgetting to do it. I've been blabbing for. An hour already.
Better write down a keyword. So you can remember. Because that's what I do. Oh, I gotta remember that and then it's good. So takes a while to come back around. I'd remember tomorrow.
Thank you. We've had a a few county councils in our time and uh. We have this new E R P, we have new H R officer. Our county council has helped me appreciate and our new R C A now. New C A O, five years now. You know. We used to have personnel policies come before us as the Board of Commissioners and. It would say stare and this policy will be reviewed at least every three years. And I remember asking our first C A O, how are we doing on that? You know, are you hitting the mark? Don't know there ever got the question, but guess what? They need to do a comprehensive review. It is older than dirt. So. We have this premier agency. How are we doing? It's not a test. It's not a pass fail thing, but rather what does it take for us to be a healthy, modern organization in the twenty first? When the first bill hit in May of twenty nineteen. Turned to the two execs, the C A O and the C P O. And I said, so. When can you tell us what the profile of our workforce is and what are we looking at for retirement?
I do remember you asking that question early on.
Yep.
We were a little surprised at the results.
The game in terms of having tools for that. We had to pull staff off of all kinds of Washington County projects. And a month later, they could come back with a kind of an answer and I went. Wow, Washington County C A O, look at what we have over here with. C W S. Let's go down here. And you're still very much in the know. But you got me as a board member to understand that greater than fifty percent. Almost sixty percent of your workforce has a tenure of five years or less. And you know what percentage of your employees? There's the whole employee set, there's your management set and your E L T set. So. That is something that we, I think, would it would help us for quick refresh. Towards our making sure that with the new board in twenty seven, twenty eight, you're set up well. And that we're being a good employer.
Kind of a leadership and a workforce.
Yeah, yeah.
Topic for this.
And and we had some of that anticipated in the February workforce development update.
Oh, great.
Out of the budget discussion.
Yep.
Um because we thought the timing would be nice there, but you want to adjust that.
No, no, I'm not asking for adjustment. I'm internalizing the good thoughts that you have going on here. Where does performance excellence show up? Because I remember boom, you came to us and presented about we had the first scale review and out of that. We had these learnings and. Failed the test again because I don't remember it. That's like these notebooks on my shelf. So is there anything happening on those in the next two years?
We have time for.
An examination or whatever?
For a discussion on roadmaps and uh and the strategic roadmaps in particular. Around long-term regulatory compliance and climate. Uh but there's not a standalone on performance excellence.
When you actually apply for the big kahuna?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at.
Question that needs to be asked is.
I I would, I would, I guess my on that is. If are we, are we going to apply? I I propose having a discussion on performance excellence. And are we at a point where we've reached most of the gains?
Yep.
And we kind of, we've captured that. Do we keep marching onwards? To move for the reward. So this is a topic. And and what I don't know is the background and kind of what. How the board feels about it going. I know how I feel and and collectively, you know, I think between the E L T. We can present how Clean Water Services feels about it, but this is an important conversation.
What's his last name? LaCicero. LaCicero. That's right.
I I need a brief, it can be offline, but I need either a briefing beforehand or some background. On the more detail.
Yeah, for sure.
On this.
Okay, and Ryan's no longer with the organization.
Oh.
He left for a a grad sector position.
Oh, yeah. Good for him.
Yeah, fairly recently.
Okay. So the other topic, thanks for encouraging me to write it down. I had gone through a couple of lengthy conversations with Diane and Mark Jockers and. And we actually, while Roy was still here. On the board, we had two different learning days where we went over governance. And. Because I wanted to make sure we asked and answered that question. But the experiences that we've gone through this year. Have caused me not to change my mind, but to be more aware and mindful of board governance. And so I'm wondering about a research project. And I don't know how to go about this. But the question is, how do we compare to the elected boards of T V F N R? And T V W D. And I don't mean that in terms of of. Composition or elections or not elected. I mean rather. What do their work plans look like? Are we doing better? Or are we late on being flippant or are we being lazy by comparison? You know? What are some of the board infrastructure things that they have in place? It's been a while since I've been on their websites, but I gotta tell you, I'm not impressed with how to find information on their boards. And what they do. So. So it's it's from that lens, you know, this whole idea of, I've been thinking about board governance and. And this is the place for me to bring it up and see if my colleagues. At first, I'm just sharing it with my colleagues. I'm not asking you to comment today if you have any interest or not. I just wanted to plant the seed and we can come back to it at a future roundtable and say, huh, you know, I've been thinking about that. What if we've done another?
I don't know as much about the T V W D nitty gritty, but I would say, you know, my experience with T V F N R is that they're on. Their boards on the train. Or trying to jump on and off of it, the train I described earlier, like that's. It's an entity that's.
Well.
At a high level. I mean, I'm being flippant.
I think the agency is, but.
Oh, yeah, the board is, the board is sort of a. A hanger on.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Or an afterthought, I think oftentimes.
So.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe there are other agencies in the nation, whether they're in this industry or not or not, you know? We were in a pretty impressive league with the U S Water Partnership set. Berkeley, Houston. And I kept and the. Us and I can't remember who the last ones, but. We got those, like might have been boat, I don't know. But anyway. There's a slide on that. So. You know. Well, one of the things I learned at Nakua is, yeah, there there are these great cities that do water and sewer. And but their city councils don't spend any time on it whatsoever. That's not us. That's not what we wanna be. We wanna be a strategic asset for you so that it's valued. But we don't have that written down anywhere. Maybe we should. Anyway. I think that was all my post-its on this whole topic, but that's that is. Why I wanted to have a little talk time here for us. Board members, are there any other thoughts?
You had my one about the sort of budget objectives and planning earlier. That was really my only major comment on this. And I guess the comment I made about leadership and. But that's it.
And looking at the agenda item on board planning and discussion. You know, we as a board need to figure out. Okay, how do we make sure we are setting up the organization with? The right kind of executive leadership that it it. Needs and I don't know what we need to go through necessarily on that. You know, we had just moved towards having a replicable. Evaluation based off of executive characteristics. But we hadn't formed that up for C W S yet. And Pam and I have been the team of two on that and maybe that's something that we should ponder. Completing with Michelle Rios and review that as a board. With with Rick and or the E L T even.
I agree.
And so that's something, we currently still have the contract with Michelle and she is open to having that. I did a little.
Yep.
Background staff work.
Yep.
To facilitating that conversation and then it's just a matter of one, making sure it wasn't getting ahead of the board.
Yep.
Uh and two, you know, setting out how much.
You know, in addition to by the end of the year. Completing the Washington County C A O twenty four contract, the twenty five reviewing contract. And the county council six month review. I'm. I'm a little scared about my capacity. So that's where, you know, we're getting some of this written down and going over it at the August roundtable. We're coming back to it at September. So I think maybe I'm hoping that for our October. Learning day will have a bit, a bit settled out in Washington County. I think we're gonna have to say no to things there. But what it means is colleagues, I'm gonna need your help. So that when we're going through that Washington County exercise, we are remembering to keep. A big slice of the pie for C W S. Let us not forget.
Noted.
There's one other thing that we may have talked around it, but didn't talk directly to you. The sign now is that. In the, in that concept paper, we talked, what we brought Rick on is acting. There was a timeframe when we were going to decide about moving to intra and I think we need to make sure that that's addressed here. You know, with the board, what our what our preferences are, we need to hear from Rick in terms of what his preferences are. But I just wanna make sure that we have time to do that within the next uh thirty to forty five days.
Problem is, we haven't set ourselves up with a work session. Together as a board until October seventh. Well. Could this happen? And it's not because I want it to be private, but since it's about. Not a, not compensation.
Yeah.
Can that be in an executive session that we could schedule? Or do we could put it up?
The other thing, sure, we're looking at uh moving to having a sliver of time for work session for C W S more regularly. We could try and place it there and.
Let's be, let's, let's figure this out down. You're gonna have to remind me of that when I get back.
You know.
I agree, though, that's a conversation needs to happen.
I will remind you.
Soonish. And I think, I mean, as I think about these Clean Water Services. Meetings, I, we're gonna need, I think, we're gonna need work sessions that are not just these. Like some of those topics are not, that, for example, is not a topic that would work well. Even if it's in an open discussion, sitting at the dais like that, that's not a good environment for that. It's difficult. We can't see each other very well.
And we're not big fans of our current work session room. We make it work.
Well, that too.
That table was not our liking. That that table came from Yahoo's. And the reason we jerry-rigged it is so that we could at least have a bit more of a circle you for the board. See one another.
Yeah.
So I I guess my point there is that it seems to me like those day, like where we're having C W S meetings.
Yeah.
I don't, I would encourage you, you know, the team that's working on more of the details of that, including the chair. To be thinking about those where some of the content could be work session, some of it could be business meeting. I don't know that it needs to all just be business meetings and then we're. I don't know that it needs to all just be business meetings and then we're only having work sessions quarterly. In fact, that's. What I think has led to where we are.
Let's. Give credit and justice um here. Uh, Elizabeth had scoped out working with our board clerk in having four. Meetings a month in addition to the special um concentrated times with work sessions. Uh, four times a month and then two regular business meetings. So uh, we're still going through, how do we get that set up? And that's where the rules of procedure comes in.
And these days might not need to be quite so long. Those the information.
I mean, five years from now. I would think we may be more just completely in that mode and not so much. These all-day meetings, but maybe could be wrong.
I think it'd be easier on, more efficient and easier on everybody in certain ways.
Another thing that is more global, not just to CWS. Catherine and I have been working together as vice chair on several prod- projects. And I think we we've discussed the fact that there probably needs to be more definition around that seat of vice chair. When it rotates, what is, what is that responsibility look like? And I think. Doing this by myself. Right, and I think that we can uh outline it, you're next.
I'm on my way out the door.
You're still next. It or not, you have to spend more time with. No, so, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll figure it out. I don't know that. We're gonna be able to start them in August versus September, but it's coming, it's coming. We'll figure it out. So. It sounds like we're all on the same. When I talk from the board perspective. Well, these four of us are. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know that, I don't think they said anything. That's not like, that's just my sound.
I don't think so either.
So wrap up. Yeah, how are we doing?
We're a little ahead of schedule. Yeah, yeah. So we we put planning at the end of the day, so. Uh, your destiny was in your hands.
Well, did we talk through the, I I know you had some leadership thing. Did we talk through? As much of that as you were hoping to get direction on?
You know, the only um. Uh, other piece that I would add is. Yeah, my understanding is initially we were looking at hoping. To extend an offer to a permanent CEO or general manager sometime in January or maybe February. Depending on how long it takes us to get through the process of characteristics and then.
Yeah, we may not be on that.
We may not be at, so I just wanted to put that. Caution out there, or at least to have awareness around it so that. You know, both. Um, if if Rick is our interim, longer term, so he has the stamina. Um, and also. So we know.
The organization has a level of predictability going through as well. Yeah, yeah. And that's where we have to scope out the. What do we want to do with the characteristics and whatnot? So. Pam will keep me honest and between she and Elizabeth, they'll pull me into the. Conversations at the right time so we can hash that out and bring a recommendation forward to.
But I think we acknowledge that we can't expect to be having a characteristics conversation in. October, November and making it off or to a permanent person in January.
So what we do know is.
Not gonna happen.
July's done from that standpoint. Uh, because I'm on a plane on Wednesday and Pam's on vacation. So here we, here, here we will be in August. Figuring it out, reporting back and then planning accordingly. So we'll figure out something. Uh, before, you know, October seventh.
Yep, try to work some calendar magic. Otherwise, I would say you've given us great feedback today. We have a staff has a debrief session on Monday to. Make sure that we all heard the same thing and take notes and we have a lot of follow-up to do's. If anyone wants to stare at a clarifier, a new uh primary clarifier, we can point that out to you uh on campus. And um.
I would love to hear at some point what it took. To. Design and build it. I know you've repurposed. We, we were here last. Uh, Logan had us out there for some kind of tour and we were looking at how buildings were being demolished. And Shazam, now it's done and online.
And someone else just tell us, I, I understand these have access, I assume it's just sort of like normal eight to five. Kind of access with our badges. Is there, can we get in the Durham? Big gate thing. So that we can get down to the conference room, like what is? What is, can someone tell me about this later?
Central.
Get through to central. You get Durham and to half of Denver.
Okay, thank you.
Then it doesn't say clean water services on your bed, which is pretty funny. Anyway.
But it's the right color blue.
Well, I I'll use that to my advantage. I'm sure what I'm gonna flame on the board of directors of.
Well, when you go to the Nike store, it allows your.
Yeah, it's ambiguous.
What do you have to have your, your? They want to have a cancel check and I said, or a, you know, payroll. I said, I don't have any of that. So they finally said. I said, here's a website or in that. Well, uh. Washington County gave us these stickers for our Washington County phones. Got one for the phone and one for the cover. So I thought that was pretty slick.
I know that's one of those.
And that's all we have for.
Should we talk about why? Yes, talk about why we had. Because Tanya lost hers. In the airport. For me, it was my husband's just was stolen. While we were on vacation, our very first night, so. I was like, yeah, I want that sticker. Thank you very much. So um. Anyway, that's it for today. So unless anybody has anything else, one, two, three, four, we're adjourned.